First thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
Motion. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Jim? Second. Miller? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda?
I would just like to add, either under Russ, or probably under Russ, because you'll be needing to be here, just like a gravel update with Shadenskis and where that was all at.
Yeah, good idea.
That's just something that probably specifically listed on.
Is Shadenski over? Are they okay?
I've heard there was maybe some dozer work and so they're starting to...
I think their crusher was broke down for a little bit too, Russ told me Saturday.
So, just wanted an update and just a couple of questions.
Anything else? Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Jim? Second?
Second.
Van der Wors? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Old and unfinished business.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Joe, did you get a consent for the Flinco fire yet?
Yeah, I dropped it.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get it back.
Good. She knows it appeared. Anything else, Chris? There's none. Old and unfinished, no. What else? What else do we have? Morris, wasn't there some old business to be tabled?
You know, we had two building permits, but one of them is actually coming in, so I put it down and the other one I just added on the missing list, too. It was a big business. That was the only thing taken.
Do we need a motion for that then? Then except the old and unfinished, we really don't, do we? We go down to the new business public hearing to consider the petition to close the section line from the southwest corner of section seventeen township one thirty-two.
We have to wait till nine fifteen?
I would wait till nine fifteen.
So, more people come in?
If anything, I would nibble away at some of these small...
Miscellaneous things?
Like designating a county delegate, I don't think anybody's gonna be here for that, so maybe something like that we can get done.
Well, I don't know why you sent it out to other departments, they might call.
Oh, okay.
So, we gotta wait on that also?
We could do some building permit stuff.
Yeah, miscellaneous? Item one?
Well, we have that H, that was one of them that we tabled last month, this H, because Josh wasn't here and he had questions on it.
Okay. They're not in it, are they?
They're what, which one?
They are coming.
That H, we have to discuss it.
They coming in? Yes.
They are, right?
Because the recent resolution we have with Conexes only says one, Conex, and they wanna put two, so they wanna come in and discuss it.
Okay, should all be in there.
Yep. There's Ross.
Chris, do we gotta wait?
We can do the eleven fifteen one if you want. I just need a motion in order for me to move our gallon and add Marlena Hardsey Cow to all the banks.
The college?
I need a motion from the county commissioners, I have to provide the banks with copies of approved minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a motion, Jim?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
By Miller? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We wanna do the bottom ones here. Frank Donald was ready.
Miscellaneous? Well, the first one is a building permit for Tanner and Natasha Dash to build a twenty-eight by forty-six family webcam on lot five of lot forty-six A, Walther subdivision at Eastman area in section twenty-three township one thirty-two range seventy-nine.
All right. So, he's down here Beaver Bay. He's got the setbacks at a minimum. He's gonna make it fifteen feet on sides, fifty feet from the back. It is less than one acre, it's one of those old lots that were platter improved back in the day, so they have a permit with Western Plains where their approval of the septic, I actually have a copy of that somewhere, too. Where Lorna Schmidt with Western Plains is gonna go down and inspect it to make sure the septic and drag field is proper for the area, so on my end everything looks good, other than just waiting for Western Plains to approve it.
So, you'd want a motion to approve if everything goes okay?
Contingent on that, and we've done that in the past, 'cause she'll show up when they're, right before they're starting supposedly, and then approve that permit.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, there's a permit.
You just need a motion? Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Based on contingents?
Contingency of what?
Yeah.
You go out and take a look at it?
I can second that.
Jim, yeah, okay, second by you? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried in item one. Tax rebate with the parcel number fifty-two dash zero zero thirteen dash zero zero seven eight three dash zero 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 for tax year twenty twenty-five.
That's a homestead credit, they didn't give, they didn't bring it in on time, so now they filed a tax.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Jim makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Two? Second. Mayoral? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item three, building permit for AT&amp;T Mobility to upgrade their equipment to the existing cell tower.
How many towers does AT&amp;T have in a county that they're gonna upgrade? Just like every mafia last night.
Not enough if you're trying to make a phone call to them.
Yeah, I guess.
Seems like they're about one short yet. At least nobody's fifteen.
That, the building permits are based off the total project cost.
Okay, okay, oh, okay. So, then they've got the total project cost within it, correct?
It's got, correct.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll start, a building permit for AT&amp;T Mobility to upgrade their equipment on the existing cell tower located on the west half of the west half of section twenty-six township one thirty range seventy-nine. What is the total cost of that project, do you know?
On the second page, if you look at the sec, or the very first page, I'm sorry, the very first page at the bottom, it'll have the building, the general cost of the project, and the second page has our fees.
Okay, I see, okay.
That's a tower that just got built like five years ago, right? Is that was right by Crested News' place?
Yeah.
Oh. Is that where it is? Okay.
Yeah, that's that new tower, it's right out there.
Yeah.
The rest of the...
That was a dead spot.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mayoral? Second?
Second.
Miller? All approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, opposed? Motion carried. Okay, four is a six county commission meeting on September ninth of twenty twenty-five at ten AM at Carrington. Does anybody wanna go to that?
I have Miller and Gardner so far.
I'm thinking of going too.
You're gonna go?
Yeah, I'd like to go, I love you, interesting media, I say. Well, you two wanna go, you two go, and I'll just stay back, 'cause you can't ride all three together, supposedly.
Well, you can ride in the way back.
I can sit in the back, I said we pull a trailer.
We'll just put a shield, we'll just put a shield in there so we can't hear you, I remember that.
I don't think I'll be.
Jim don't wanna ride in the box, so he's not gonna...
I'll stay home, now you can, you can report back.
No, I wanna go.
You go.
I'm a little early.
You go.
It doesn't matter.
Gardner and Miller.
I'll help you guys make your decision, I'm not going.
Last one I was carrying, 'cause I did have two.
Well, yeah, if you're working Labor Day weekend, you're probably a little too busy.
Okay, item five, building permit for Andrew Vetter to construct a fifty-five by forty-six home and a thirty-eight by twenty-six attached garage on the southwest corner of section one township one thirty-two range seventy-four.
All right, the house is gonna go back here, setbacks are good, see no issues with this.
Motion to approve.
Gardner makes a motion to approve, second it.
Second.
Mayor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, raffle permit for District Eight Republican Party of North Dakota.
I think I left it on my desk down there, I'm sorry, but what they did is District Twenty-Eight is they're, they wanna have like a gun raffle, they're gonna sell a few guns, and I think there's a cash prize, it's all, so they're gonna hold the drawing up at the Hazleton School.
Okay.
I'm not sure on the date, I can't believe I've got so much, I forgot it downstairs. Does anyone just approve it, it's just a raffle permit, it should be okay.
Jim? Jim makes a motion to approve. Second? Miller? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is Christina in here?
We only got four more minutes.
That's a waste of time. Yeah, but that's not enough time for...
What, New York?
No, Jim, he's not there though, now he's gotta just step back, he's gonna...
Did, oh, you're gonna wait?
We'll just wait for the...
Hard development?
Yeah.
Why don't you just sign these right away and get them on the way?
Okay, good.
Give you something to do.
Greg, you guys gonna bring this up on the, at the six county meeting?
Yes, he told me to bring up something about projects.
The order of...
Yeah, order of projects.
Somebody would. A company would come in, would they go to the landowner first or come to us first?
Oh.
To start that.
You'll be assigned, it's pretty tough, you know, 'cause you don't just have to sign anything with the landlord, you just have to agree to a term and then you're...
Here's the thing on that, they go to land and get this all approved, and we shoot it down. Bad guys.
With bad guys either way, so...
It gets the people...
Yeah, yeah.
Probably work, it wasn't approved in the first place.
Yeah.
Here's the minutes, if you wanna sign those right away.
Because one of us knows about it, we're telling people.
Yeah, that's true.
No, it's pretty...
Yeah.
And I signed those, I'm the one that signed them.
I'm sure somebody's pocket, I think they're gonna have them, it won't be too happy with you.
Yeah, you're right there. Like I said, we were the bad guys regardless, one side of the other.
And you find a scenario where the good guys, you let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I'll even wear my blue tights and my ass on my chest, I've got that designation, but that ain't gonna happen.
It'd be pretty hard to come up with a project.
I found my raffle permit, I had it in my pocket.
You found it?
You guys wanna go to a little...
You're gonna look at it?
Without at least an ease...
I found the raffle permit, I had it in my pocket.
I think the trouble is, is they're always afraid that information's gonna get out there before they have their ducks in a row, and by the time we find out about the project, it's basically shovel ready, which is like hard, you know, 'cause then, you know, then everybody's putting pressure on you, like, oh, all these wheels are in motion, well, you didn't have your permit, maybe it shouldn't have been in motion, but modern age of projects...
Well, it probably does warrant a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see it both ways.
They're doing a nineteen eleven Trump fight pistol.
What caliber?
Henry Golden Boy, American climate, it was a very fine ten.
I have three pens, I don't even mind.
I don't worry, that's got three batteries, he said he'd sell me one. I don't know, a thousand bucks is a lot for a gun to sit on the air wall.
Well, can't wait till Christmas, like, so you have free pens?
Which one? I got a buddy, he's got, um, three veteran Henrys, you know, they're engraved in the sock, he said he'd sell me one, he said a thousand bucks is a lot of money to put a gun on the wall, I mean, just to stare at.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna use it, 'cause they don't make them anymore, so you're not gonna use it.
Yeah, really like it.
Yeah. Most of my guns get used, so, and abused.
So, I always felt like, it's a foreign object, man.
Well, you're a real collector.
I'm not, I am absolutely not.
I'm a real collector.
That's that raffle permit, Jim?
Oh.
Yeah, I found it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Well, it's nineteen fifteen. Item A of public hearing is to consider the petition to close a section line from the southwest corner of section seventeen township one thirty-two range seventy-six and running east until it reaches the east edge of parcel number twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero three eight zero four dash zero two zero. That's right by the old sail barn evidently, correct? Yes, to the north of the sail barn, the road, goes back to the, yeah, well, track. And Leo, the wife, the family has land back in there, I'm aware of that. Who brought the petition forth? Kenny Jope, correct? Kenny's in here? Yeah, okay. Does somebody wanna come up and speak what you wanna speak in regards to the closing of the section line or for? And why you started the petition for what?
Well, I'm not here to...
Lot up near the white car.
I'm not here to cause any problems or anything, stepping on anybody's toes, I just wanted to plant some trees on the section line that goes nowhere. If you go onto it, there's waterways everywhere, there's the creek on the other side, you go, keep going, you run into the park. On the east end, there's absolutely no approach to get to this land, and on the west end, there's no approach to get to this land unless you go on private property. And all along the way, wherever you gotta go around a ravine or whatever, you're on somebody else's land. So, it literally goes to nowhere. The approach there is not on the section line. That's the sail barn approach, and that's been there, why that was put there, I got no idea.
No. It was easy, that's why they did it, out of the water.
But I don't, I don't dispute that or doing anything about that, if he wants to let him use that approach, I really don't care. But if I have to give up thirty-three feet, I just as soon see the adjacent landowner give up thirty-three feet and move everything on his side further instead of right on the line. So, when they come in and drive on it, they're all on my side.
So, he's got, who's back there, Vetter, is that tires piled up?
Yeah.
Not mistaken, on the north side?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And even before that, when the sail barn was there, the barns, the buildings, were right up within five feet of the center of the line, so all that concrete is there yet, too.
And that all the manure, they always dumped it to the north.
That was all dumped over on my side.
Yeah.
And I never said anything.
Yeah.
Now that it changed hands, well, he cleaned all the manure up and everything, but, I mean, I don't care if Roger wants to use it, but he could at least ask. Nobody says anything, they just drive wherever the heck they wanna drive. So, when you go in on that approach and you go in, get onto that section line, you go past the ingredients, you have to go back over onto private property again, 'cause there's a big drop-off there, already in. Right in that corner there where that grove of trees is at.
Yeah.
Right there.
In that black spot.
And that keeps going all the way through east until it comes out the other end, and there's, well, there's beaver, creep runs through there, you gotta go around that to get out there, and when you get out the other end, there is no approach to get out, there never was. And on the other end of my land, on the north side of my land, there's approach there going over the top of the railroad track and down the approach on the other side, and then there's a gate there. So, do I have to give access to both sides, or I got no idea what's going on?
What is the railroad there for right away, John?
Um...
About to go near John.
I think they were fifty feet on center of where the tracks were.
Fifty feet on the center on both sides?
Yeah, so it's a hundred wide.
Hundred feet? And that Eastman, I'm sure is still in place, right? Because they're still...
Yeah, they still...
But you're in the process of buying that.
I am.
Piece back there, that's why, that's why he had it surveyed, his land, it needs to be surveyed.
And you have to have it surveyed before it's sold, correct?
Right.
Again?
Well, they wanna see the survey.
I wouldn't look at it last night, if somebody went, told you to go out there and drive the section line, you'd have a hell of a time trying to figure out where the hell to drive, I mean, you can't, there's, there's no section line there.
I mean, it's plain to see, there's no approach there to go into it, so, does everybody, can you, even when you go past the railroad tracks, the section line, can you, nobody gets to drive on that land that's farmed there, I mean, does everybody get to farm a section line, or can I just drive right through it? No matter if corn's planted there, or wheat, or whatever, can I use sixty-six feet of it to drive on?
Legally, you can, yeah.
Yeah, legally, I can.
You could drive...
So, I drive up there, Roger, is that all right, or you gonna have a problem with that? And I just run everything down, sixty-six feet of it? I don't know, I guess I have the right to.
What do you run it down?
Pardon?
What is there to run down? It's all ground.
Well, your crops.
And weeds.
Weeds?
If that section line is built to where you say you should be, the county would have to put an approach in, but a railroad route, that's why...
Does it look like there's weeds there? I mean, there's, there's crop line going through there.
And the county would have to put in a new approach right on the section line.
They should, yeah.
I would, I would see no problem with that.
Hold on, guys.
Hold on, Gary.
I just, my, I mean, the reason why I'm thinking that some of this got done this way though is 'cause railroad was there for quite a long time, was it not?
Exactly.
Hundred, a hundred years.
Hundred years. Exactly.
So, I, I mean, also, it's probably part of the reason why the section line wasn't ever really developed or utilized a lot, because it did end with railroad, and then, you know, so, I think now that the railroad's gone, then you have to entertain the idea of that section line being more usable now, because it's not getting utilized for, you know, for rail tracks, so. And the other thing about a section line is it's really not even about vehicle traffic, it's literal public access, it could be blocking access, it could be anything, so that's something that you have to consider when granting or trying to eliminate public access, it's not just for vehicles or tractors or anything, it's literal public access, so, I mean, that's the other thing to consider, too, it doesn't have to be drivable to be considered usable, so...
I look at it from your standpoint, I don't have to defend anybody, being it's within close distance of Linton, and the next generation, meaning you, I think there's two, three kids, isn't there, your family? If they'd ever wanted to subdivide that, if something, whatever happened in this area with development, where you could subdivide it for housing development back in that area. So, then you'd wanna have access off of eighty-three to get back there versus coming in from the east, you'd wanna be as close as you can be to highway eighty-three to go up and in. That's the only defense I have, and I just, yeah.
I think Kenny's point, when you, when you look at this, though, there's a section line that runs all the way across here that's been farmed through.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what he was saying about driving through the weeds, that, that's illegal. It's encroachment.
I can think of something, you know, all around me.
I'm not saying that not everybody's doing...
No way I can get in there.
Yeah, no, no, I, and I'm not saying that not everybody's farming through section lines, 'cause a lot of farmers are.
They are.
That's just, that was Kenny's point, is he could drive, he could come through here and drive this back and forth till he drove it to nothing, right?
Legally, he can.
Boy, absolutely, I think he can, yeah.
I'm not here to do that, I'm not here to do that, I'm just, I'm here to just, if I can't plant trees that close, there's no reason that you can put pile tires or park machinery right on the line.
You're saying if, if you can't plant through this...
Right.
Why can't everybody else plant through every, every other section line in the whole county? I get what you're saying.
Exactly, I mean, I've been there for thirty-three years, yet Leo has never used that section line to go to that land until Roger came along, and Roger didn't use it that way either.
What's that? Excuse me, go ahead.
Used for the last forty years, and what I found, I found a twelve-foot machinery that got a spillway, but the machinery nowadays, there's no way that eighty-five-year-old spillway's gonna hold this guy.
I figured that, that's the reason why they're coming in there, yes.
Correct, correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
Well, what is the problem?
The problem is...
Excuse me, excuse me, gotta tell you, you speak your piece, and Leo will let you come up and speak your piece, okay?
I don't have a problem with that, with you using that section line, not at all. But the way it's set up there, there's concrete there and everything else, tires right up to the line, so either he has to drive on John McCory's land or he has to drive on mine, he cannot drive down the center of it. I don't have no problem with you using it, it evidently isn't mine.
Hey, Josh?
Go ahead, excuse me, go ahead.
That track there, is that, how far is that off the section line? I know it's not perfect, 'cause it's GIs, but...
There, or...
Right, like, how, where is thirty-three feet off that section line on this map, just to even give us an idea?
Yeah, on the north side and south side.
Okay. So, I mean, what it looks to me is, it looks like them tires and some of that other structure that's there is encroaching.
Right, yeah.
And if that stuff wasn't encroaching, there's probably enough room to drive inside right away if it's encroaching on, on other people's property, not...
Right. I think even planting trees, if I'm not, correct me, I'm wrong, you guys, I think even planting trees on a section line, you have to be back from the thirty-three feet, is it another, what is it, a hundred feet?
Not even sure. If there's no buildings, if there's no buildings around, we can go up to the thirty-three feet.
You can go at thirty, say thirty-four feet and plant trees.
Yeah.
Even if they grow up and they hang into thirty-three feet right away, thirty-three foot right away.
That's how NRCS's guidelines are, that soil conservation follows.
Okay, okay. I didn't know what...
So, if, if he closes it, we still can't plant up against the line, it has to be sixteen feet thrown.
Sixteen feet away, yeah.
Unless he signs saying, yes, you can go up to the line, but it'd be sixteen feet then, in those corners, but... And John told me, he said he doesn't have a problem with me planting trees up to the line, he don't care. Well, I, I'm not there to plant them on the line, I was away from the line to start with, but like I say, if I have to stay this far away, the other side should stay the same distance, and I don't have a problem with them guys using it, not at all. But there is no approach there, you have to go on private property to get to it, so if you're going in on the north side, if Roger wants to start going in the north side, well, he has to drive on my land again.
Do you have anything to say, really, that you'd like to step up to speak? You and your family?
The only thing I would add...
Let me speak. Go ahead, speak, go ahead.
Russ, what would it take? Take culvert and how much material to improve that section line to where it's passable?
To the north, you're talking?
To the north of the sail barn line.
To the east, from the highway passed on the section line to the railroad, would take how much? Roughly.
They won't allow it. They won't allow it. Well, the other one has to go there.
Right, it, it can only be so wide, and I think it's over width on it to start with, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a forty-foot top or something like that they go with, but...
Okay. That thing's been rocked and kinda concreted in.
The hardest part would be connecting to the existing culvert, because they're cemented in, so they're not...
There's a lot of water goes through there.
Well, there's gotta, there's gotta be a reason why they didn't connect them approaches, 'cause the other one's on the section line, and then this one's offset to it, and that doesn't really make a lot of sense why the, you know, I'd be curious to see what the state would have to say on why, you know, why they had offset approaches like that.
Why was that, when was that sail barn built, you remember?
Oh, back in the fifties?
Yeah, that'd be in the fifties.
'Cause there was a sail barn in Stroudberg...
It's part of the San Antonio, do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then they moved out there.
Yeah, yeah. And the sail barn in Stroudberg was down by the elevator, where Malwine gave that shit. Yeah. Go ahead, Jim.
I think it was a swamp. It was a swamp where the section line was.
Right.
It came a little bit to the south.
To get out of that muck, yes.
Just something that wasn't done in the right spot.
Yeah.
Makes sense, huh? Make it simple.
Well, we closed all the swamp off, they took land from me, where you built that, where it's leveled out all off of there, they took ground from you and ground from me to level that swamp off, so there is nothing there anymore.
There was a drive-in theater at one time where that land, what are you at, right? And they owned that property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I liked that swamp, 'cause you could sneak into the theater space.
I used to do that. I know, it's...
Probably pay now.
William, you have something you wanna say, you and your family? Go ahead.
My son-in-law's here.
Okay.
He's talking to Darren, I do.
That's fine.
My name is Mark Andrews, I'm the son of Leo Carrollbosh.
Okay.
Son-in-law, have been for the last thirty-one years. Our biggest concern is, in... Um, our biggest concern is, in overall, is getting access to that piece of property, uh, which is a huge amount of their acreage. Uh, it's also the access to that upper, uh, portion of the property, um, from highway eighty-three. Right now, they currently only have a spillway out the back of their barn, um, that sixteen years ago, when the river flooded, uh, this was the only access that they could actually get into to get up to that property and to farm. Um, and also every year that we get a ton of rain in the spring, that access, that spillway that they cross to get to cattle, uh, which Roger also farms, uh, has cattle, range cattle in that property, uh, they can't get back across. So the only access to get to his cattle and get to the acreage of land that's up there is through this access. There is nothing from the other side of the property that is built. Because of the gravel road and the steepness of that property on that, where that section line is supposed to go.
Yep.
So this is their access, um, basically to a huge portion of their income currently, um, which comes from their renter. And he needs to have access to this property. Now I understand, uh, what the gentleman is saying here, um, it would be nice to have that upper, that, that approach defined all the way to the, to the rail bed, um, to be able to have access to that property. Um, I also do understand section lines, I'm guessing this one was dead-ended, as you said, because of the railroad. Um, and that's why it was, the upper portion of that up into the property was probably eliminated because of that, because of the steepness of the banks. Um, but you still have to have access to that property from there. And that's the biggest complaint that the family would have with closing this. So we would request that, um, either the, it's rebuilt to, to, uh, fit his needs, um, and allow us to have access, or this, um, opportunity to actually close this section line is denied. Is what we would request as a family.
Okay.
Anything additional, Leo, that you want to add?
I've got a little here from Leo and from Roger. You have to take that.
I would like to say. Pull that mic up to you, Leo, a little higher.
I would like to say on the section line, I know it kinda goes in and out with the county. If they, if they don't close that, kinda make you come happy. Kinda make a half, half a road, so we know we're right on the section line when I drive in there and use that land. And not go back and forth like on John's line. And I know by the way, you cross railroad, if you're right on the section line, there is a railroad culvert in there, would need to be taken out and kinda made, so a person can drive across there with the machinery.
Sure.
That's why, that's kind of a curve in there. Not stayed on the section line going on John's, John's part.
Yep.
So. My concern is to make that section line straight to where it was on there, oh, you can see that dark spot by the railroad tracks?
Yep.
Yep. That's where a culvert would need to be put in a little bit, you know, halfway there, so you can cross it.
I'm sure that's a big cement culvert going through the railroad path, isn't it?
It's not cement, no, it's I don't know what kind of material it is, but it's nothing.
Okay.
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be hard to take out.
So up here on the front, coming off of eighty-three. How many feet is that?
On eighty-three, there's not a no approach on eighty-three there either.
Right.
But it would be nice if you could blade that road probably a little bit, if you keep that open. So, I or my renter can stay right on the section line, so we don't bother nobody, so we don't bother.
How many feet is that approach going into the sailbar off of this section line center? That's gotta be about sixty feet, Joe.
About a hundred feet on center.
How much?
About a hundred feet.
Hundred feet.
On the center.
I would say as long as John is okay with using this approach to get to the section line, you wouldn't need to put one in by the highway, just a, a little bit of one where you come in, if you wanna keep that section line straight.
Would you sign an agreement, like with, would you?
Yeah, but, I suppose I should be up there, but.
Come on up there, Joe, yeah.
Um. I, the way I understand it is the state won't allow Kenny to plant trees unless the section line's closed, is that the right understanding?
Well, I have to be thirty-three feet away, and if I'm thirty-three feet away, then I have to maintain the other side of these trees anyway, they don't pay to put them in.
Right.
Right, that's true.
But I, I don't have a problem planting the trees, but we can't close section lines, is what my point, I mean, like, they were saying, you gotta get through there. Well, we're gonna let Roger and Leo go wherever they want for now. But I'm not gonna live forever, somebody else might buy that.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying.
So we gotta keep it open, and then we would develop the section line for Leo if a table about my bins.
Right, yeah.
So, unless you could just.
Because it'll be back here on the table with that.
I don't think it would take much to blade, blade it a little bit, I'm sure there's gravel and all that there.
It wouldn't take much.
So we can stay right on the section line from one's or John's.
Would you come around?
Approach and then go on the section line, go straight into my.
Yep, I think the biggest thing is you gotta have Thomas move a lot of garbage out of there.
Well, we could move the stuff, but then, then he's getting that tree, if we just put him, we gotta get rid of the tree. We're letting Roger come our way, because it's easier.
Right.
With big trucks and stuff.
But I'm, I'm just saying, if we leave the section line, there's serious encroachment.
Right, now, I, I would say that shadows right now.
Well, I was out there last night, there's serious encroachment on there, there's no thirty, there's no thirty-three feet away from the.
Oh, no, 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 it's to the line, it's to the line.
Yeah, it's gotta be thirty-three feet.
Temporary stuff is needs to be thirty-three feet away.
Everything's gotta be thirty-three feet, if it's an open section line, anything on it, temporary or not, is encroachment.
So you got a lot of corner posts to move then.
Well, I, I, I realize that, but I'm just saying, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna penalize Kenny, then everybody's gotta be thirty-three feet from the center line of that, of that section line, is what I'm saying, if we want it to be open and usable, everything needs to be thirty-three feet.
And I don't think we should penalize Kenny, I think we should let him plant his trees down in that low ground. And in fifty years, if they gotta be tore out to put the section line in the right spot. But we can't close the section line.
Well, I don't think he wants to plant them thirty-three feet from this. No, I won't plant them. Because then he's gotta go around all it, mow it, and it's kind of a pain, I mean, it's.
It won't give you trouble if he's right on the section line with snow blowing him on your place, on that bin side, no?
No, it, it would hold the snow down there.
Down in that draw.
That's, yeah, so I don't have any problem, it's just the state laws don't let him plant as close as he does. But we still can't close section lines, Kenny, because that's how I got to town, was on a section line, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, you and Al West, these section lines aren't closed. Right? They might be fenced, they might be farmed, but they're not closed.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. They're not closed, are they?
No, I, I agree with you, I.
Because it was a few years back, I think, with lockouts, wasn't it? Am I right?
That was never closed, that's not closed. It's not closed.
Yep. So any more discussion, all you guys?
And another thing, if somebody buys that railroad property, they could keep me from crossing that too, if we had closed the section line. Even if John would let me through his. And like John says, he isn't gonna own that forever.
None of us will.
You know, you, you, I gotta have access to my land, or else my land is absolutely worthless. You remember that, Aaron knows that.
And Russ, you're allowed that. Just the way it is.
So, that's, how high is that now?
Okay. Thank you, Leo.
Mr. Jokum, if veterans would move their tires back thirty-three feet, and they would stay on the south side of the section line, you'd be, you'd be good then, right?
I don't have a problem with any of it.
Right.
I just, I don't have a problem with none of it.
Yeah.
I just figured if I gotta give up thirty-three feet,
Right.
it should be, the other, the land should be the same.
So if they move their stuff back thirty-three feet, you're.
Yep, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Then you would do what, Kenny, I just want clarity. If they go back thirty-three feet on the south side, from the section line center line, you would plant your trees, or you'd like to plant your trees, you're saying on the section line, or you'd go back thirty-three feet and plant a row?
If, I won't go, I won't plant any trees, but I gotta stay thirty-three feet away.
Right, okay.
It just won't happen, there's no sense in it, because then I gotta mow on the other side too.
You're just planting trees to prove a point, is what you're.
Well, not really a point, um.
You want it.
He wants to prove that section, right?
I was trying to get cost sharing on trees.
Yep.
And every year that I tried to get in it, they up, you needed more footage, more footage, more footage. Well, now, I'm not planting trees over here now, because I have to have all this footage. I'm not just gonna put a row of trees down the middle of any place. So I put, I'm, the trees I'm putting in right now, I'm paying for myself.
Yep.
I'm not getting any cost sharing, I, I can pay for them trees myself.
Yeah.
I don't need a handout.
Yep, right.
I think the biggest thing is you just want the section line to be used then, beyond the section line. Oh yeah, it should be used equally.
Right. John, would you talk to, uh, Thomas and have him move his stuff better?
We can move his stuff, but then that, Roger's actually got better access going between the tires and the grain bin, because the railroad crossing is so much better.
Right, right.
So if he moves them up to the grain bin, then Roger's gotta go through that tree. You know what I mean?
One tree.
I understand, I don't have some problem, if you wanna let him go on dirt land, I don't care, don't matter to me, it, it's it don't matter. Like I say, I'm not here to cause problems.
Once you guys all signed an agreement amongst yourselves.
Yeah, but when there's a section line, we don't have to sign agreements, right, even if we hate each other, we use the section line.
Section line, yeah, you just go.
That's why we have section line, we don't need agreements, we have access.
Yeah.
Leo's got access, we got access.
Yep.
Yeah, you got sixty-six feet, yeah.
Yep.
I just don't feel comfortable driving in on your approach, driving all the way through there and going past yours to get to the other end, I mean, that's.
It's an old grandfather agreement that they had years back. And it was a gentleman's agreement, a handshake, and look you in the eye and say, hey, all good, do it. There weren't, yeah, there weren't lawsuits and all this, there is today, you don't dare do nothing, but our lawsuits stared you in the face, you know.
Well, I, I guess with me, I would, I would make the motion to deny the petition to close the section line. And, uh, would also, either as a part of that motion or in another motion, say that we have to send a certified letter to the owner of that parcel that's encroaching on the section line, that they have to move all their stuff back ways thirty-three feet. Whoever, whoever the property owner is in there, but McCory's bed, or whoever, that, that property's gotta come back thirty-three feet off the section line, and and the section line should stay open. And then it's up to Leo to negotiate, if he needs access off the section line, he's gonna have to negotiate, you know, with the landowners on how to access it.
There's no fixed structure on that thirty-three feet south, is there?
It's still concrete from the sailbar.
Okay.
The sailbar was maybe into your land even then, or not, not quite, just, the concrete goes to the line though, right?
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's.
We'll still let Roger drive where he drives, even if we move the tires, there's a little better view.
Yeah.
So.
Now there was an old pit.
You can see all the concrete, you couldn't see all the concrete there.
There was a building back there, was there not, if I remember, yeah.
Yeah.
Right there is the concrete.
Yep, oh yeah, there's a lot of it.
So that makes, it really makes sense to keep doing just what we're doing, but I, we'll move the tires if we need to.
No, I guess if he, that's where you're gonna let access to go through, uh, we can just leave everything alone, just where there's, I really don't, don't.
No problem here, yeah, I don't, I don't.
But you can't leave things, you can't leave things the way they are. It's public now, like, it's one thing if you wanna have stuff out there that nobody knows about or nobody talks about, now that's in this meeting, us as a board cannot allow that encroachment, that's my opinion, right?
So what do we do about it? Once it's brought to the attention of the board?
Well, the, the approach is a whole other subject, that probably has to have conversations with the state, because they're pretty restrictive on approaches on and off eighty-three anyway. There might have to be another, there might be some kind of easement between Leo and John, or however, that needs to get sorted out as a private matter, but the matter at hand for this board is that, does the section line stay open or not? And now that there is an obvious encroachment that's brought to the public record, we do need to handle it, or now we're complicit in it, so that's why, I mean, it, it can't stay the way it is now. It could have been hour ago, it can't now.
So now it needs to be addressed.
I, I don't see how we can, because if anything happens to it in the future, now this is on the record that we're aware of it, and now that we're aware of it, it's gotta get handled, I don't, I don't see how you can do it now, so.
Okay, makes sense.
You don't have to do anything, that's my opinion, it needs to happen that way, so.
But you're opening up a jar of worms, you're telling?
I'm not opening a jar of worms, the worms are already opened up. This is, this is, uh, this is trying to figure out what to do with the worms now, it's already open, so. I would make the motion to deny the petition to close the section line, first of all, I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion made by Mr. Magg. Is there a second to Aaron's motion? To deny the permit? Seconded by Miller. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
I would also make the motion that Emmett County sends notification or letter, proper notification to the landowner that those encroachments have to be removed off the section line right away.
Did you hear the motion, Mark? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
There's a second.
Miller makes it, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried to deny the second motion. Joe will have to send certified letters?
I believe that's the proper process.
Right, do it, that's the proper way to do it?
Yeah.
Try working with Josh, make sure you get the right encroachment file before you do it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, I got, I guess I've got one question, uh, appreciate the denial, um. With the railroad bed there, it's kinda so tricky, how do, how do you, who's responsibility for building an approach up to get access, would it be if, uh, the gentleman over here was going to buy that land, that railroad property, so he would continue to have access on that section line? Is that on the county, is that on the landowners, whose responsibility to go across that railroad track would it be?
Well, it depends, I would say that Leo and his family, or you, would have the right to buy that railroad right away also, on your side of the property. Am I right or wrong?
Exactly, I have no idea.
I don't know, I do, you have any?
Kenny, you're just buying shoes, and you're just looking, buying your shoes, right?
Yeah.
You're buying the whole thing?
He owns the railroad, has the right to buy each side that, uh, that join, join you land, they have the right to buy their share.
Up against their property, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
So, if you put that section line open, then who's the railroad property doing it? That's what we're asking.
Yeah, it doesn't matter who owns that, that piece of property, that section line is gonna be open in the public regardless, whether Kenny buys it or somebody else buys it.
Exactly, yeah.
And to go across the railroad, responsibility?
For that section line, same.
Yep.
Yeah, you could do that right now, even with railroad over the property, there's sixty-six feet there, it's just that parcel.
John, is that the tree you're talking about?
It is. So, so for the near term, we're just keep doing everything.
Yeah.
If you're just saying for development, someone would have to put a.
That tree would have to be cut down.
Let's just do all we can.
The line would have to be, you can, I'm tired with the way it is. But down the line of the half of me, somebody make trouble.
Well, you should probably have some written agreements.
Kinda make a half.
At a minimum.
Road or something to follow.
And that's where, that's where my question is, because someday it's probably my wife and I, and her sister, and her husband are gonna make a decision on, you know, what we have in this property, but how do we get, you know, up into our property and have access with that, that low area that is there right now, that is railroad bed?
Well, from my knowledge, there's no obligation by any party to actually improve the section line. Well, from my knowledge, there's no obligation by any party to actually improve the section line, but the landowners can petition the county commissioners to improve the section line for access, or the county commissioners could agree to,
Just do it.
Make it a part of the road system, essentially. That's probably the two pathways of actually making a road on that section line, so.
I believe there's a hundred foot, right, I mean, there.
On the state, that width of the railroad property, a hundred feet wide. Yep.
Like I said, I'm fine with the way that we're doing the thing as well.
But the county is under no obligation to build the road on that section line, nor is the landowner, but either one could. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
But there's no, I don't think there's any required.
If this becomes our problem down the road, then we need to come back to the county.
You'd have to either petition the county commissioners to try and build the road, or you could petition for yourselves to hire it out or build it yourself, or throw it on there yourselves. The right of way exists. Who builds the road is, is a future discussion.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Give that a little thanks. Thanks, Kenny. John, sort itself, you'll get value from that one. There. Okay, guys. Thank you for coming in. Russ Lawler, County Road Superintendent, monthly updates. Good morning, Russ.
Um, I think to start out here the easiest, if I can, uh, John Martin is here this morning too.
Okay.
Um, has a few questions for us, or he had it for me, and I didn't really know the answer, so I think I'll just let him talk if it came up.
Morning, John.
Yeah, good morning.
Pull the mic over to you.
Okay. Um, so I'm just here, I kinda sent this out to everybody here. Um, this flex funding for the twenty-twenty, on the sixth of twenty-twenty-seven years, uh, the applications are due here in approximately two weeks, September nineteenth. Um, so we have three projects, but the first one, number one, the project, the seventeenth.
With this noise out here.
Uh, the seventeenth Avenue Southeast Grade Raise, north of Braddock.
Yep.
Um, initially, we had an option, but then I came up with another option, kinda talking with the state, another way to fund it, which is more like our original application back in twenty-twenty-three. And we broke it out, we would match your federal aid dollars with flex funding, so half and half. That was back in twenty-twenty-three, and that's when they approved the engineering for, for the project at a hundred percent. Uh, but we did not get construction funding at that time. So now this application, I thought, since we could also match federal aid this time, maybe that's an option to try.
Cause that brings us up into the high category, right? If we match fifty percent or not.
Yeah. Talking with them further, I don't even know if that really matters. They said the commission could just pick any random project.
Okay, okay.
That, that's just kinda the rating that the DOT uses. So there's kinda two options. Uh, option one is the county, um, to get the construction going, would contribute one percent, and then we would ask for ninety-nine percent for flex funds. And then option two is more like the twenty-twenty-three request, um, where it's kinda fifty-fifty. We match federal aid dollars with, uh, flex funds. I, I don't know what the right option is. Um, it's kind of a guessing game, unfortunately.
I was hoping you had the answer.
Yeah, I, I wish I could.
Do you, do you, do you have kind of an updated projected cost of what like a fifty percent cost here on a project like that would be?
I, I do. And I could give you this. Maybe Josh.
Cause obviously one percent is gonna be cheaper for us, but at the same time, it might never get done trying to, I, you know.
So the fifty fifty, actually, none of that is county funds. That's only using your federal aid dollars.
Right, but there are certain portions used. I mean, you always end up coming up with something. There's an over or some kind of a change.
Well, there shouldn't be.
You don't think so?
Nope.
Okay.
Cause we'd actually be asking for engineering with the flex funds, so.
Oh, so the, the engineering, cause I was kind of, where I was thinking, we would probably be responsible for the engineering.
Don't, but so we'd ask for flex funding for that too.
Okay.
And kinda in the past, um, I feel like they've kinda gone for projects where the local entity is kinda throwing in some of their own money. In this case, you would throw in your federal aid dollars.
But the federal aid dollars is at the state level. We don't have any, we wouldn't be no county funds.
Exactly. Yep.
Right, we basically have an account with them for our federal aid. Like, that's how it, cause that's how you have.
We've been approved in the past.
Right, and you're borrowing ahead and all that stuff, just cause they essentially manage your federal aid funds, which is, it's, it's allocated to us, right?
We need, we need to start with every, I mean, every road, just one road at a time, we need to fix, and if that's our better chance of getting this, I mean.
That's what we gotta do.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking. I mean, the, the engineering has already been taken care of and it's, it's been done. I think we'd be fools not to go that route with the fifty-one percent, just try to entice them. I mean, that's what we talked about when we visited the first time with this flex stuff is, let's what, let's do what makes the most sense for us to get matching funds so that we can make these happen, whether it's just one road or not. It's, we just have to fix one road at a time as best we can.
Now, these costs just keep going up double.
Was the, was the design, design have any resolution for the, for the Carlson approach too, since it's, you know, since it's a project we're doing, and we're not gonna touch that or elevate it or change the color?
We're basically just tying into it right now.
Okay.
Within the, uh, right of way.
So it might get elevated a small amount just to match the design, but it's only gonna be in the same.
And not, not much. That's kind of a high point in it.
Sure.
So actually, the rest of it's almost getting built to that same elevation.
Okay.
So.
Not outside the, the seventy-five foot right of way, no.
Okay. So possibly.
Well, how many feet is there pending from the seventy-five foot right of way to that hill that goes up, up that Carlson area?
Oh, you mean onto their property?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, I don't know. Thousand feet, maybe?
How many?
Maybe a thousand feet. You're saying where there is law on their road?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I mean.
So that's passable, yeah.
Well, that's, it's, it's not on the section line either.
No.
No, it's.
Right, I was just, I was just wondering, cause, I mean, naturally, as you're doing a project, if that's an impediment to the project, is that a part of it, or is that, no, it's not viewed as anything that needs to get improved for the rest of the project?
No.
So what, what do you do on that upgrade? On all that rock that was hauling? Being you're upgrading, you've gotta, you're winding that, cause you're small. What do you do with all that rock? Do you pull it all up?
Nope, everything that was, uh, brought in, we're just gonna leave it, build on top of that.
And rock again on the outside?
Yep.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we'll have some, some large rock on the outside. It's gonna be, it's gonna last for forever.
That's kinda the process of the grade raise too. I, I mean, the emergency grade raises intended to be like a building block for the permanent, right, yep. So, I mean, all the, all the intent behind raising it was with the intention of, you know, building that as a foundation for basically a new road, essentially, so. Same thing when we did the other grade raises, like out by Swamp, uh, Swamp Lake and all the mother different ones too, there.
Josh, what is the distance from that road to the high, where it starts to grow up on?
Down here?
Yeah, so probably like on the east side of the weeds or something, yeah, from like there-ish to the intersection at least. How far is that?
Seventy-five feet back to the, to right there.
Uh, three hundred ninety-one yards or?
Yeah, it's about a thousand feet, a little more, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred and ten.
Quarter mile, almost.
Yeah. It's not on the section line, but, through the west, is that on the section line?
No.
So where is the section line?
Halfway up.
Halfway up, that's a quarter line right there.
They had a road number, there was a house back there, they addressed it based off that.
That's a clue, okay. I was under the understanding that was a section line, it's not. That's okay.
Path of least resistance.
Yeah, right, but.
So do you think with option one or option two, you really don't know if there's a better chance of getting approved one way or the other, or?
Well, in my thoughts, I'm thinking option two.
Option two, yeah.
Yep. That's what we've seen in the past, what they've approved.
Well, naturally, if you're requesting less funds, you probably have a better chance of,
Yep.
being a part of those whole solutions, so.
I mean, you also gotta think there's only forty million for all of the counties and all the big cities in the state, and they wanna spread it out as much as possible, so. Put a bunch into one project, I don't know.
The last time we met, you also said because it had already, it had already been funded, the engineering.
Yep.
That if we put some skin in the game, there's a better chance that we'll be selected as well, because they already, we already got grant funding for the engineering, and that's all done, so. I mean, that's where I said option two just seems like a no-brainer. We just have to start on, one road at a time just needs to be fixed, you know, these, these really bad ones.
So option, option two would be utilizing a pretty good chunk of our federal aid funds for, for the future.
Well, here's the kicker with that too.
Go ahead.
You only have six hundred, well, you're, after next year, you're only gonna have six hundred thousand in your federal aid budget, approximately. So you'd have to borrow ahead in two and a half years. So you'd use your twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, and probably most of your twenty-twenty-nine federal aid funds.
So you are limiting the federal aid projects down the road possibly then, because you're, I mean, you're allocating those funds ahead to pay for this project now.
And those funds can only be used towards your CMC roads, to your federal aid roads, so.
Which does mean you can't fix federal aid roads or CMC roads, you just won't be able to use federal aid funds, cause we're already borrowing ahead for this project, essentially, so.
John, do you know, did we have any other roads on the list that we wanted to do, that we push back now or not?
Um, I, I guess not really. The other one is the Strasburg West, that is a CMC road also. But usually, when you use your federal aid, it's good to use it all at one time for, so you're not breaking it up, cause you have to.
So there wouldn't be a road project that would have to be set aside for five years, right, like that?
I guess we don't have anything scheduled right now.
The only thing would be that paving west of Strasburg, which we would just have to fund with a different, we'd just have to fund it a different way, cause what the federal aid funds to use for, cause we're utilizing it on seventeen.
And, and we're actually, that's the second application, and we're pretty much requesting ninety-nine percent flex funding for.
So if we were approved that way, we wouldn't be utilizing federal aid dollars anyway, so.
No.
That kinda loosens that up.
Yep.
Well, I like the idea of using option two, just cause the, those numbers are a little more divided, so it improves, I mean, there's no point applying unless we wanna try and get it, so. We don't think we're gonna get it, there's no point applying, so I would say taking the best route to approval, or at least our opinion, the best route to approval is private.
Would be option two, correct?
If you're serious about trying to get a project approved, that's probably the best.
Do we need a motion for that? No?
No.
Just a gentleman's agreement?
Yeah, so you just tell me which one to apply for.
Okay. Any other discussion, you guys?
Is anybody in disagreement with option two, I guess, would be a better question. Not, yeah, I'd say.
Okay.
What do you think, Russ? All good?
Cause that's what everybody thinks, that's, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't, honestly, I don't know what the best option, that's why I'm, John was here, you guys are here to figure out, you know.
Okay. Any other discussion? John?
Well, since, since you're here, though, the, the bridge by Sanger's, the updated bridge, that, that's completed.
I jumped it the other day, yeah.
He jumped it.
Right over the top. Oh, I did, I did have, um, Larry Lyer visited with me about it, though. He said, um, he was hauling corn, and he came down from the west, uh, to get onto the bridge and head south. He said, "That is so narrow in there, he almost took the guardrail out." He, he, he was wondering, he was thinking, he's thinking that the road should be a little bit wider to the north, so that a guy could swing a little wide. He said, "You can barely even get on that bridge without just about going down into the ditch a little bit."
Hmm.
It's, it, and it is, it's, it, I mean, it kinda jogs, you know, a little to the, to the northeast a little bit, and then around. It is, with the guardrail there, pretty tight, and I, I just thought I'd bring that up if you, I don't know if there's really much a guy can do, if a guy wants to build that road anymore, or, it's a, I know they're not super happy with that nice bridge out there anymore, cause it's a highway going past. Everybody's taking that road with semis now.
Are they?
No, it's, when I was out there, there was like ten of them, been.
Well, that's good, that means it wasn't a waste of money to run it down to nowhere, so.
But it's tough, like I said, they are saying it is tough to get around onto the road and get back, just because it's, they put a guardrail past the bridge and then back around, up by, Sanger's there.
Sanger's a little ways, right?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, cause it's pretty steep there, if you.
That guardrail was not there before, and I guess that was part of the plan, but I can see where it is now.
Yeah.
A problem with stuff like that.
Yeah, I just thought I'd bring it to your attention. Since John's here, it worked out really good. I don't know if there's really anything a guy can do, but.
Yeah, I, I don't think so, unfortunately.
I mean, it'll just probably get ripped off at some point this fall or next spring. I, more than likely, that guardrail will probably get cottoned, tore out, and then I guess a guy can figure it out from there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that approach is bigger than it was originally.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I think it's, I think it's more kinda how it jogs.
Yeah.
You know, that road kinda jogs a little bit, and then you're supposed to come back around, and actually kinda creates a,
Tough.
A choke point almost works. So, yeah. Is what it is. A damn nice bridge.
It, it's, it's not a, it's not a truck corner, put it that way. I mean, you know, cause the, the, the curve or the road actually goes past, and you kinda takes it, it kinda comes, as you turn, the road comes back to south.
Yeah, this is, it comes up, it comes basically out like this, and then back around, so you actually almost have to kinda go around and then come back around.
So it's a stupid corner, cause that road goes at an angle.
Right, it's, it's not a ninety degree.
Coming off a big curve. Yeah, it's just kinda goofy. But it is a really nice bridge.
I don't know if it'd be a stupid corner.
An awkward corner.
It slows, it slows traffic down.
Not ideal. Well, and you know, the thing about it is that people have to remember on approaches, especially bridges and stuff, it's meant to slow traffic, like, there has to be some give and take. You, it's, you can't.
It's a tough corner.
Speed while also accessing.
A tough corner, you can see.
Right, I mean, there, there could be some improvement to it.
Maybe like a semi or something.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that that was at an angle there, on the north side, by centers. So that's tough.
Well, and it, it just, it looks way different than it did, than it does right there, or way different, but that's kinda how it does. It kinda jogs out.
It could've been widened more maybe on the north side there, couldn't it?
Ideally, we should've shifted that whole road probably further, further north.
Yep.
But, I mean, that just adds a lot of cost.
Yeah. They won't take it if they find out that it's tough to turn?
They'll, they'll slow down, yeah, they'll, they'll probably do. The traffic will probably slow down, they'll turn it down.
Unless you're out there, Donovan, you'll take it. Anything else kinda add to it?
Go ahead.
As far as the bridge itself, Aaron, you were asking, we do have a walk-through at eleven, uh, this Saturday this morning. We're gonna be out there for the final.
Okay.
And then after that, I believe it's done, I think.
It's done, right?
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
I guess as far as the county guys and stuff like that too, uh, we've had a, a training class here week before last out at the county shop for some of our new operators. Um, Craig actually attended that for the afternoon, morning and afternoon. Did some hands-on as well as some classroom training for pole and shoulders, stuff like that, so, just to try to get them a little more, um, well-rounded, I guess, was the whole purpose of it. And then we did also attend a class in Harville for, uh, installing culverts, and that was a one-day class and stuff like that as well, so four of us went over for that.
Good. Did they, did they have any discussion on these classes about when they get grass in their blade, when they toss it into the ditches, this pile them up? Was there anything addressed in those classes, how to get it backed up onto the road and, and level it up?
Yeah, there was, yeah, yep. That's been, uh, this year, the lead situation on the size of the roads has been, uh, it's, it's tough. It's, them guys are fighting out there pretty hard, but they're, I mean, in their defense, they're doing pretty much what they can, because the, the farmers don't wanna mow it, and the blade operators don't wanna bring in a road, so it kinda sits there idle and just grows up, and it's, it's becoming a bad,
Yeah.
We're getting some narrow spots and some, I don't know what's gonna happen here. I don't have the answer for that.
Do we have a good rotary mower? Do we upgrade that or no?
We have a mower, but we don't have a tractor.
Oh, you still don't, okay.
We're gonna end up leasing a tractor is what's gonna happen, but, I mean.
That IH bill didn't come through, did it?
No, that, we've been waiting for them guys to come through, but, they didn't make as many tractors as they thought they were going to or something like that, is how this all ended up, so, we're gonna end up doing the lease program again, which isn't a big deal, but.
Was John there?
More than likely, yeah. Yeah, just probably given from Saylor out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, as far as other stuff, we did, uh, up there by Shays, we did, I drained in the ditch. Dave Ellison was up there and drained that out. Uh, we used, uh, we took like forty side dump loads of material out of that ditch.
That's crazy.
So it was quite.
All silt.
All, it, it was very nice soil, it was topsoil is what it was, you know.
Yep.
But, yeah, it was, at the end of it, we were down like three and a half feet or something like that, I think he was in the ground already, so there was a pretty good amount of stuff to come out of there, so, hopefully that takes care of a lot of that problem.
How long of a stretch was it, like a quarter mile?
Uh, it was just about five hundred feet, if I remember right, four hundred and something, just say five hundred feet.
Hmm.
So it was a pretty good stretch there, so, um, we do have some stuff at, at the Strasburg shop too, last winter. We do have some stuff at, at the Strasburg shop, too, last winter. We had a, a storm come through, and they came into the shop one day, and, uh, the north wall was completely wet. So they started doing some digging around and stuff, and somehow. They kind of came to the conclusion that, uh, the chimney or the wall, whatever was leaking, and they got like a bunch of moisture and stuff in there. So that's been kind of a project through the insurance, and, and Marla's has did a lot with that stuff, and she ended up getting a grant for us. For down there, so there's gonna be some work taking place down there, they're gonna. Tear the insulation stuff off that was in there.
That's blacked it?
Yes, and then.
Well, it was moldy.
Yeah, moldy, moldy and stuff like that, so they're gonna do that, they're gonna reroute the furnace chimneys from the top. Out the side this time, and close the top holes up. And then, uh, do a little, um, few other things, and then it's gonna get new lights, new, some new wiring. And then new insulation as well, so.
Spray foam?
Spray foam, yes. So that, the grant will take care of just about the majority of that, the way it sounded, so. That'll be a good thing.
Good job.
And then the Litten shop qualified for the lighting grant as well, so we're gonna be getting lights out there, which is gonna be a. A good thing as well.
So you put that out of pitch for the lights?
Um, that went to Jack Doctor, got that Jack's Electric.
You didn't have to get a bid on those because it was under a certain dollar amount, you had to get three estimates for the insulation and everything. So air restoration.
A little bit, but they needed lights.
Yeah.
That Litten shop was terrible. Bright, brighter gets terrible.
You didn't notice it until you put new lights in the Hazleton shop? Then when you go into Hazleton, you're like, good God, it's bright in here, and you realize when you go into Litten, you're like, it's, it's dark in there. It is.
So then on another thing, um. I guess the gravel situation, I was with Tyler here last week. I got some numbers for him, for, they're, they're moving into the Hague pit again down here. They should be there this week, hopefully sometime, they got some stuff there already. But I got some numbers here for you guys. With some options, I guess, he gave us like five different options. If we are interested in stuff like that, and he would just like, uh. Move forward if we did decide to do it, I guess.
And as we spoke. We're kind of looking and leaning towards better gravel.
I hope the I hope so, yes, that would be a good thing, yes.
So would you may have to put either rock or clay with it, huh?
He thinks the clay is there, he's pretty sure that the clay to get, what we did is we went over to the Knoll pit. And we got the specs and stuff from there. And I said that stuff seems to be working really well down in this west, southwest corner of the county here. So that's kind of what he based the, the, the stuff on here, if you read in the back and stuff like that, he's got the specs. He was looking pretty high in that two hundred there.
Is that better gravel than the Pager pit, or the, what's his name up there? Not the Pager pit, probably will be a Pager pit. Woolbong pit. Is that better gravel?
It's pretty comparable, I would say, you know, it, it's very comparable as far as, so.
What do we have left out there on the Vandevors pit? And how long is that lease?
I checked with Marla's, the leases were, were well within the range of leases, they're late. So if I remember right, the Knoll pit is whenever we get it off, if I remember right, right?
Whoever, if someone terminates at first, it's a lease period.
Okay, so there's no problem.
There's no date on it.
The Vandevors one, we had till like, uh.
I feel like that was a ten-year lease.
And it.
And it would have been done in like nineteen. Twenty thirty-two or something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe it was twelve-year lease then. We were going longer, so I remember that was the first, that was the first pile that we'd crushed when I was commissioner. And we used to always do like a seven-year lease, and we were running into problems, we were constantly renewing leases, because. You crush a lot of gravel, it's hard to get rid of it in seven years, so we started going to. Like ten or twelve-year leases, so that, it would have been done in probably like twenty nineteen.
No, it's not till like twenty thirty, so.
It's probably good for another five, six years at least, I would think.
Yeah, he called me last weekend, I.
Sure, because I had somebody addressing to me, the term of that on that Vandevors pit, I have no idea.
It's ten or twelve years, I don't look into it, but it, it was, it was longer, it was one of the first longer ones, because we were just running into a hard time, I think we even kind of. Paid a little more, then we kind of came to an agreement, is that, you know, they let us have a few more years, and, yeah, so it was.
But we have roughly half that pile is left, give or take, probably a little less than half, we just.
On the Vandevors?
To peak a bit, so there's quite a bit there yet.
And on the Knoll pit?
About, we're about halfway, maybe a little less than half, we hit that pretty hard this spring here, as well as the Vandevors. As we speak, they're moving the loader from Knolls up to, uh, Woolbong right now. So they're hauling a few more out of the Vandevors this morning, just to kill the date, and then we'll be coming out of that Woolbong pit here for the. Near future, I guess, so.
I had the Spud boys and people, now the captain, calling, copping, you must have had water in the road going in? During the holiday, over the weekend?
Oh, we've been trying to keep a handle on it, yeah, because we. Once they start hauling potatoes, they, you know, the water is, is kind of the, the main thing, if you can keep it moist, it seems to hold together a lot better, so.
You were, they were hauling like forty or fifty loads a day?
Yeah.
That's a lot of material.
Well, I think we gotta go with this. It's kind of in a good spot.
Yep.
How, how does it? They have the lease, don't they?
They do, the, the. If we would do something like this, we would have till March first of twenty-nine to get the, the gravel back out of there from the Hague pit here. If we decided to take one of these options, and we don't have to do this today. Um, this is something you guys can look about, or talk about, whatever we want to do there and stuff like that.
Well, what would happen after March of twenty twenty-nine, if they're still grabbing there? Don't you want them to have a rider within this? You have to, you have to add something that you're not held hostage on that pile.
Because they've got quite a, they got that whole works lease, don't they?
They do, yeah.
So they may come back and do, you know, do some more.
Yeah, according to Tyler, he thought there's approximately four hundred thousand ton of gravel in that area. So it's not gonna get all done this time either, so there's more than likely gonna be an extension or a. A new lease, something like that, you know, or. I don't know if we'd have, like, right now Tyler actually has the lease. If this were to expire, I don't know if we'd have to go through Tom and Ren. Or go back to Tyler, I guess, I'm not sure how that would really work, but. I would say they're pretty decent guys to work with, worst case, you know, if, if we did get in a bind like that, but I don't really see. Twenty twenty-nine years.
It probably wouldn't hurt to iron it all ahead of time a little bit.
You know, four, four years to get it out of there. Depending on the quantity, I guess.
Yep.
Well, it's a good spot to get it out.
It is, we got good access on the highway there, yeah.
Right on the highway.
Would there be, I see we have an option for class five, crushed and stockpiled, would there be a value of having both classes in case? I mean, if you have like some heavier roads, would there be some value in having a lighter grade? Instead of just always having one class?
There, there would be.
Doing two piles, huh?
You know, and we have that option, he, he would give us that option to do smaller piles and separate them.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
A scoop here, a scoop here, dump.
Well, I just kind of feel like you could, you could even blend loads, you could blend loads at the pit, or, or if you just wanted to haul a lighter material, you know.
Just off the.
Kind of like what we've been doing with the Vandevors stuff, maybe hauling to certain areas where it's a little bit lighter, I. Maybe just, or, you know, this class thirteen gets a little heavier in certain spots, you could blend it with some five or vice versa, I. Just wondering if there's a value to that, rather than just having one classification in that whole pit.
I think there would be.
I think there would be, yeah.
Doesn't seem like the cost differential would be much.
Different.
Or, I mean, yeah, I mean, you're talking basically a dollar a ton difference, so there is some cost differential, but it's not, it's not like it's double the cost to have a different class, so.
Right.
I feel like having some variability there would probably be valuable.
Well, yeah, you could kind of try to match, match it for what you need, right?
Some what, yeah?
Well, there's just, yeah, if you're gonna have, if you, if you, if you've got stuff out there, at least it gives you some options, otherwise it always seems like we're. We have the wrong gravel in the wrong area, and it keeps always being the wrong gravel in the wrong area, so we never make improvements sometimes.
When do they need to know, Russ?
Um, as soon as possible, I guess, he gave us a thirty-day on this, or a thirty-day thing, I think, was on this one here, but. The sooner the better, he, he's gonna crush no matter what, so I mean, he's gonna be there, you know, he was just.
He was certainly doing something with her own.
So do we have to put a fence up to the county?
No.
To keep out, you know, from gravel being moved off of our piles, you know?
There, the piles will be separate, just like they are like at the Bosch pit and at the Woolbong pit and stuff like that, so.
I didn't know what you guys did in the past.
And then he did give us an option here, the very last option is, is just to come in and buy it by the ton, he would crush it, we can come in and buy it from him. So he's gonna put up a pile of his own as well, if, if we decided to go that route, but. Then you're kind of at, uh. I mean, if he sells a bunch of it.
Yeah.
We're out.
We're still better off that with our own, yeah.
Well, that might also be a caveat to maybe just having a little bit smaller pile. Or having two separate smaller piles, because there might be some available for. Rather than crushing fifty thousand tons, maybe we crush twenty-five of like a class thirteen, and then if he does have some for sale, if we would need more. There might be an option to just buy some, you know.
Buy off his pile for a while.
You know what I mean, yeah, like, so you don't necessarily need to have this monstrous pile of class thirteen when there's might be some for sale, and in the event you would need just a little more, and you buy another thousand tons from them if it's.
You still have everything invested into that pile.
Well, because it's, the truth of the matter is, is when a lot of people ask sometimes where does the money go, a lot of it is piled up around the county. I mean, that's where the money goes, is crushing gravel, too, it's, it's still a resource, it's still an asset, but it's, it's not getting used at the moment, too, so. That, and that would just make a better option to maybe have two different classes, since there's, might be some available for purchase, too, so you could justify having. Smaller amounts of both classes? If you think that's valuable, I don't know.
I can definitely check into it, I mean. Variety is definitely good, you know, I'm not gonna do, you know. To make up the difference and stuff like that, I mean, there's not a lot of price difference, I believe if I understood Tyler right, to actually make the tractor class five. We had to add more rock to it, that was, the expenses, a little bit more on that side. So. You know.
That'd be good, you could use it in.
Yeah.
Spots.
And Dewayne supposedly has a rock pile fairly close, so it wouldn't, it's. The, the thing is, on all these deals, when we do add rock to this, if we do, it's gonna be at the county's expense, so. These numbers that Tyler has here, there would be, it would be above and beyond that, because we'd have the expense of hauling the rock in there. So there would be some added cost to these, to these prices as well.
And purchasing the rock would cost, right?
Right, you know, that would be on top of these prices here, so. So, yeah, and then there's definitely some more places to check for testing, I talked to him for testing and stuff like that as well. Um, there's probably like six or seven places to be tested, he said we can do that whenever you guys are ready, so. In the near future, we will be running around and getting some more.
Have we, have we exhausted all our resources at the current pits, like, are we making sure there's not more gravel that, you know, just. You got the roads, you got things already rolling that way, and just make sure before we go out somewhere else that we know there's no more gravel.
Right.
To sell or to, to mine?
We have not, to my knowledge, I mean, that's something I'm definitely checking into, because yes.
I think that'd be the first place to probably start, just because we already have the infrastructure, the design, the plan.
Absolutely.
Before we go, it's, it's be on the new road into somewhere, and have to forge new contracts, and we landowners, it. It'd be a good thing to just be absolutely sure there's no more options at our current locations.
Okay, the Woolbong one, they thought that was pretty well dominated.
I think the Woolbong one was mined out, because that was the reason we mined as much as we did, because we were told that's gonna be the last. Nobody's gonna be up there again, so that one is probably played out, but as far as like the Knoll pit, the Vandevors. If there's more options there, I think we should explore it first, but.
I was told that there was more options, or more to be had in that Knoll pit. To the west. If that's truth to talk, I have no idea.
Nine times out of ten, anytime we quit crushing, it's usually because of weather and money. Either there's only so much we wanted to crush, or. It's, it's always late fall, it seems like when we get crushing done, then we get, you get froze out or something, so I would, I would say that. There's probably a pretty good chance there's more gravel in a lot of them places, if we just double check and make sure. If the landowner wants to still work with us, and we could get a new lease, and someone will come in and crush it, it would be a lot. More streamlined when trying to carve out a new place.
Did you build a road into the Knoll place, did you not?
The Knoll place, I think, got a road, every one of them roads pretty well gets kind of tuned up, even like out of Woolbong, we didn't build a road, but it got bladed up, leveled, you know, maybe a little gravel got sprinkled on it, just so you could use it, so. Pretty much every road gets a little investment, just because.
Was northern improvement, or was that, was it northern improvement up there at that Woolbong pit? At one time, I don't know.
Maybe, maybe years ago, I think the last place was, wasn't that Fisher's?
Fisher's crushed it.
Fisher mined it, didn't they?
Right, but Fisher's usually, it's, it's like Tyler's deal, Fisher usually crushes a little on their own, or I think they did with Kenny, and then that is for sale for.
Okay.
You might get a northern improvement or strata or somebody coming in.
Coming in a hole.
They win the bid on a project close by, and they, so.
Okay.
It's, it's all like Fisher and Ken Woolbong, but it's available to anybody, so.
Do you have any prospects up in the north end of the county of gravel, or not?
Uh, there's a few.
Of course.
Yes, Aaron and his, his dad actually gave me a few, but there's a couple of them, yeah. Could use a few more.
Oh, yeah, that's a tough spot.
I turn a lot of dirt up there, every time I find something interesting, I kind of keep an eye on it, because, yeah. A gravel pile in the northwest part of the county would be a game changer, because that. That right now, and then the southeast part of the county is another, if, if this Hague deal and, and even an expansion of the Knoll pit would help out that. That Hague in south Strasburg area, and then, yeah, north. Northwest and north central part of the county really is. That northwest of Hazleton up by Kleinco and all that is.
Way outside.
The gravel reserves.
Well, southwest, too, but at least they're in the Vandevors, it's just closed, but, yeah. Northwest, there's nothing.
No, they're not depleted.
No, they aren't depleted. Although the, uh, potato farm did, we gave them the gravel made. Probably changed the definition of, of the minimum maintenance going, going north from the farm. We gravelized. And they bladed it, it was tough. Which brings up the question, what, how do you guys define minimal maintenance? When you classify roads, minimum maintenance? Is that portion going north from the farm, said. That hasn't been bladed by the county, I'd say, in twenty years.
On the old highway, you know, four, so, so correct?
The blade's been in there this year.
Well, this year, but before that.
But isn't there a road closure sign up at the north end?
That was Herbie's doing.
Okay, because I see the road closed, well, it's closed, you know. I thought maybe they abandoned that section line, but it's not really a section line. It was still laid from eighteen oh four.
Actually, there, there's probably no reason for the county to continue to. You know, basically own that road, that's one thing we thought, we want to request the counties to. Release it. Because the only time there's a lot of travel on there is when the. Potato firing falls potatoes or during deer season, whenever Tom, Dick and Harry thinks they can keep deer off the road going.
So with, with this, these gravel volumes. Is it just kind of an estimate, like, or could we maybe?
Add or subtract?
Well, like, we want to do just like thirty thousand ton class thirteen and twenty thousand class five or something, I mean, and not modified, he was just. I'm assuming he was just trying to give us, like, you want to do at least twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand.
Yes, they can be, they can be fluctuated either way.
I just, if we would do like fifty thousand ton, but maybe split it into classes a little bit, like, we probably don't have to go fifty fifty, but maybe like. Sixty forty, or, you know, just somewhere close to that, where I, I think it'd be valuable to have two classes, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think that would give us some versatility, especially during the, you know, you got a wetter part of the year, maybe your class five stuff's just gonna be better stuff to heal up some spots and. I don't, I think it'd be worth a try anyway, if we tried and fails, it's like, well, we won't do that again, but I, I think, I think it gives us a little flexibility.
Yeah, we talked about that, we do pull it from up there, bring it down, and take it some up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think even.
We got that flexibility.
I think even the Knoll pit kind of proved that. You know, blending some material and trying to make it better. That was, seems to be the public opinion, was the gravel that came out of that pit was. Was superior, and even the guys thought that, too, so. I think our ability to blend gravel at any time is, is gonna make us.
Big plus.
Well, more well-equipped, if you're gonna spend the dollars and you make it so every inch of that pile can get used by using it to something else. That's a better value for the money being spent, so.
Yep. So when does he want an answer on this?
Well, you should do, he'll be doing it, if it could have been good at all, right?
Sooner than later, I mean, and we can't wait like a month or nothing, we gotta have this within.
The next week or?
Right, it'd be nice to have it today, but I understand this is kind of a big decision to make, like, right now, too, you know.
Well, I don't believe it, Jim, I think we should go ahead.
I think we should ask, we should ask. I think we should, we should ask Lenny to print some checks.
Oh, no, bro.
How much money do we have?
I, we'll go through the budget in a little bit, but, um, I did amend, I, I did send you where I amended some of his budgets. We got in almost four hundred thousand for some road mileage, money that I put in road district, and you have to levy eighteen mils in your road district, or else you don't, you don't qualify for any of these flex funds.
That isn't granted.
So I did put in five hundred thousand for gravel in road district for next year.
Well, because I, I mean, if we were gonna go with just my idea of doing the, let's just say twenty-five thousand ton of class five and twenty-five thousand ton of class thirteen, judging by probably some miscellaneous fees and stuff, you're looking at about four hundred and fifty thousand bucks to do, you know, fifty thousand ton. So what does that come out, about nine bucks a ton? Yeah, so that'd be nine dollars a ton, if you did two classes. So, I mean, if we can, if we can justify four hundred and fifty thousand out of the budget somewhere, which is probably a decision we can make later, but we should be able to make a decision today once we go through the budget then.
Yeah, I'll let you know at the end of the day.
I mean, no matter what, you're probably looking at spending anywhere from four to five hundred thousand. If, I mean, if you're gonna go with any of these volumes unless you're shrinking down, because even if you did fifty thousand of like a class thirteen, that's three sixty, seventy-five plus any taxes or fees or any, you know, you're looking at close to, no matter what, so. I'd say we'd have to just evaluate the budget and let you know this afternoon or whatever.
Okay, that's all I got, I guess.
So you guys got something for me? Oh, I was asked by Holzer about a cattle crossing.
Who?
Yeah, Siri Holzer. Out here on, uh, Pat Huber's old place up there.
Yeah.
They run cattle up there, and, uh, he was talking about putting some, I've never seen him, but he wants to put some temporary cattle crossings that just lay on the road. I've never seen him, have, have you seen him?
Right, no, he hasn't showed up to me yet.
Something that you lay across the road, and then it's like a cattle crossing, so I suppose it'd be like a speed bump or something, you have to slow down as you're coming through there.
Oh, so he can graze the ditches and all?
Right, so they kinda.
That'd be like Tony Bumgarner does up there with the black mats, I'd be, yes.
I guess my opinion, every cattle guard we put in's been nothing but a nightmare. On, on top of it, but.
That was my response to him, who that.
We're either responsible for cleaning them, responsible for fixing them, the, the three out there by like Ron Moss and the people place and all that, them ditches are getting eroded, because as the cattle walk, and then it rains on it, and then it walk, and now there's just grooves, and I mean, at some point, that road's gonna have to get modified, abandoned or repaired, because there's major washouts on the in slope because of where the cattle have been walking.
Yep.
I just, I don't, I, I like the ideas, I get what they're trying to do, but as far as the roads, it does nothing but, it's just a big.
They just have it.
It's, it's, it's a terrible maintenance issue, you know, forever.
He was saying only using it two weeks out of the year, is that right for us? Is that what he told you?
It was a short period, right, I mean.
So it's more of like a removable one, then, like?
Right, you just lay it there and then remove it when we're tall.
Right.
They don't wanna put fences up, no.
Changes the conversation a little bit, then, but I, I still, my main issue is I never realize it with, with the cattle, once they start getting a path, and if that path, if that path is in the whole line of the ditch or in the in slope, now every time you get a big rain, now it drops, and then after twenty years, you're.
Yeah.
I mean, you go out there on that, is it third avenue, right up there? There's some major grooves, you know, where between the water and the cattle, they've raised some havoc with that road.
And they will.
I'll tell you what, though, he can say two weeks and leave it out there for five months, I, you'd have to, we'd have to have an agreement, other than be two weeks. Because talk is cheap. You know, I mean, they can say it'll be two weeks, and you go out there six weeks later and still.
Might be there six months.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you can probably talk to your blade guys, there ain't one of them likes them things out there.
N- no, and that was my next thing, is when it's laying there, that's when the blades are gonna come through, you know?
What is he doing?
I use it also on about half mile, like, up on the blacktop to the north. I've got fences on both sides plus lake, like, because they're such steep ditches when they built that road years and years ago back in the fifties. You can't cut it, it'd be ideal for that, to graze it out.
Buy sheep.
Buy sheep.
I, I guess that's my opinion, is it seems like cattle guards always something, every year we have, we have a deal with something, we gotta maintain one, clean one. So it, it just seems like there are a lot.
No, Russ and I have been going back and forth with a few this year.
They're frustrating.
It's a mess when I do.
I would like to see them gone, my personal opinion, but they, they just, it's like Aaron said, they don't, they don't help anybody on the county side, put it that way, I mean.
No, plus you ride through, you got livestock, you gotta be careful.
Yeah.
It's in there narrower, usually, you know? Yep, yep.
Did you get word on the signs on seventeenth, getting it off those two?
Yes, I did, yeah. And that's a, a never ending, like, we put them up, they take them down, so we're seeing who wins the battle there, but, right?
Well, still.
Yeah, wow. Yeah, it's, uh.
Have you been on the Langley Bay road recently? The weeds on that sucker are five and a half feet tall, and they're starting to grow into the, into the tar lines. I'd hate to have to re-surface that substantially earlier than we have to. I know you don't have a mower, so there ain't much we can do there, but.
I can send Mike out there maybe and spray them down on the road and stuff like that, get them.
They're, the, the, they'll, they'll have to be rolled back or something, they're huge.
It's kosher?
Yeah.
They're growing like crazy here.
Yeah, they're all five feet tall.
Oh, well, uh.
We need to care almost back.
They're gonna be in our, their fences, we park, we.
I'm just worried, like I said, it's some of the grass is into the tar line, they're coming through, it's kind of encroaching on the road.
Okay.
That's a pretty nice road, I hate to see it get tore up because of that.
Did you catch anything?
Huh?
Did you catch anything?
No, I didn't even fish, I just pontooned. But I talked to somebody who did. Catch their limit.
Russ, did you ever check that culvert out on, what was it, ninety eight or by Keith Van Allmop place?
Keith Vanderlawn.
Let's do the west of the Vanderwolds.
Yeah, yes, and Dave was down there.
Kind of really washed out there?
Yeah.
I don't know if the whole culvert is a weird place, I think.
There's a couple of them on that corner of, uh, where Carver lives back there.
Okay, yeah.
Right there on that intersection, I think Dave said there's two of them. Um, that's another one of them places where we gotta go in there and just dig a bunch of material, because it's, the, the ditch is higher than the road is again, type deal where silos out of their fields there, you know, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're in the process, he's down there right now on a, on that big hill on the county line on ninety-six working.
Oh, okay.
He went and cut that hill a little bit, or cut the shoulders down a little bit, trying to get some drainage and stuff.
I see about, about Joey Culver to the east and north, or, or down there.
We haven't been there, but we're working our way that way right now.
I think that's a cement culvert, isn't it?
No.
I see, uh, just got a front one, buddy, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, yeah.
They could use a few more.
How do they work, how do they work like this time of the year?
They're okay.
If you got the weeds mowed up.
Yeah, if, if the weeds weren't three feet tall, you know, now you can, you, you can knock it down, but then you gotta leave the weeds laid for a week, two weeks before they dry out, you know?
But with a rotary mower, they could knock it down and you could cover the blades.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
They know what.
Pretty much, pretty much. Did you get a new boat on the choice?
Uh, he was gonna send it this morning, but I didn't bring it with. It would just be another on top of what that one was.
Did next era come back with anything on those two disc blades for the front of the blades?
Not to me, they haven't.
No, but they spoke to us about it.
They mentioned to me that they approved one for sure.
One for sure?
Yes.
Okay, possibly another.
He said there's more to follow, I don't know what that meant, maybe, I, I don't, I'm not sure. He, he wasn't very specific, and I didn't figure it was my place to ask, so they'll tell you what, they want you to know, and they're gonna tell you anymore anyway, so.
Ross, the other guy was gonna ask, how about that road where Ron Kaiser has, you know, I don't even remember the number, but, boy, that thing is. They washed out. Little bit of gravel.
You grabbed it, didn't you?
Did you get it gravel?
From eighteen oh four in?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was gravel.
Wow, very good, yeah. I drove that, that was unreal, yeah.
What they do, then hills wash out, they're, it's, it's hard to hold it down.
I didn't want that coast north of Salmo, it's tough too.
Yeah, I couldn't believe how steep that is, you know? Yeah, steep, well, that's good, I know he is tall. Yeah, good, good job.
Anything else, guys?
Yeah, you checked his permits, yes, yep.
Good job.
But I review anything else, Russ, to say?
I don't know.
No?
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
Oh, I'm gonna ask you one more question, Stacy, of that tar deal. On that heater on that tar tank, have we done anything with that?
No, we haven't.
Nothing, okay.
Uh, speaking of that, and we will, we'll get to it here, we're gonna, if it stays as dry as it is right now, we probably got, we're gonna try to finish some roads up this week, and if we don't get no moisture, we might shut a few blades down and try to get some of these other projects caught up a little bit, if, as long as Mother Nature stays.
Yeah.
Cooperative doing, you know? So then we would attack them, we got a few bridges and stuff, um, to, some work on some bridges and things like that, that takes four or five guys, so we would go after some of that.
Was there some roads that got washed out, we had an inch eighty in Strasburg, I didn't know we had that much rate?
I didn't either till, it was, it was very, a very small area, I think, that got it rate.
They said it was flooding in Strasburg, the streets.
Yeah, I did, like, three miles long, there was nothing, so I didn't hear of any rules, I guess, but.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Thanks for lighting your melon the other day. You guys run into rain on Sunday?
Running, why did he melt?
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna put that on white?
No, no.
Ah, let's see, what do we got here? We got this utility permit for South Central Regional Water District to install ten inch and a twelve inch PVC pipeline for service, to tune up only an MTL expansion.
Russ approved this already.
They are?
Russ approved them.
Okay. So he was out there, okay.
Yeah.
I know that we approved both permits for, one for South Central Regional Water.
Should I read that one out loud to ten lectors, or is it written now? Okay.
It's just a, it's just a.
Yeah, yeah, second. Okay, motion by Vander, second of my Vanderwors, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. What else we got?
You wanna go through the budget?
Yeah, we probably should, uh.
You gonna bring up the stamping?
Sure.
In your book, I gave you some handouts, I did print out the, um, twenty twenty-five levy, schedule levy limitations for the simple reasons that you can see when that, um, when I go through the House Bill eleven seventy-six cap calculation worksheet. So I thought that was pretty good information for you guys to have. Um, we do the cap calculation worksheet, the state said we have to use all the twelve hundred levy numbers, so you'll see in this handout which ones over twelve hundred, that's why I provided that handout for you guys. The second, um, sheet that I gave you is just the instructions for the House Bill cap calculation. It explains every line item that I'll go through with you guys on the worksheet. Um, but this kind of gives you, um, gives you kind of a, a list of how I came up with all my numbers. So we'll go through the first, um, cap calculation worksheet, taxing district Emmens County, do you have that one up there, gentlemen?
Um, cap calculation worksheet Emmens?
Yeah. Okay. So what I did is I gave you guys also a list of all the levies, all the twelve hundred levies that I had to use on the Emmens County calculation sheet. Um, it, it includes all of them, all the levies that we levy for, except for the hospital, the soil conservation and capital township, because they're not in that twelve hundred category. So all the twelve hundred category levies, I had to combine on this one worksheet. So line one, you have to provide the levies that we're levied on these twelve hundred categories here for a tax year twenty-four, twenty-three and twenty-two. And then line three is taxes or special assessments levied to pay off debt, and there's been an attorney general's opinion and also some state's attorney's opinion that if you levy, if you use tax dollars to pay for motor greater lease there, leases, or any kind of road equipment leases, you can enter that number, you can use that number as a deduction. Um, so the four hundred and eighty-six thousand and the four twenty-five and the three twenty-six were our lease payments that we made for road equipment. And line four does not apply to us, we don't have any bonds, we don't have any special improvement projects. Um, line six A, um, when they passed this House Bill eleven seventy-six, they said the emergency fund levy does not apply towards this cap calculation. So I was able to take off of there, I put in there that what we levied in the emergency fund in twenty-four, twenty-three and twenty-two. Line six B, same thing applies as with the emergency, when they passed House Bill eleven seventy-six, they said the water resource districts levies, um, do not apply to that cap cal- calculation. I did include them on line one, so here we're able to subtract them, so that's what I did there. And then line seven doesn't apply to us, we don't have no school stuff, or we don't have no animal shelter, as in line eight. Um, a city fire capital approval, we don't have that. Line ten would be a not entity wide, which requires a separate calculation. So what that is, is the unorganized road district, that does not have the same taxable valuation as all these other levies do in the twelve hundred, because the cities do not pay road district taxes, and nor does capital township. So that needed to be a separate calculation, so I was able to put that amount there, and that got subtracted. Line twelve would be the difference from line one minus two through eleven, came up to two million five hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen, which then carried to line thirteen. Line fourteen is, you take that amount times three percent, and you came up with seventy-six thousand nine hundred, six hundred and ninety. Line fifteen, you take line thirteen plus line fourteen, and it all calculates out itself. So, calculation one tells me that the base year levy plus three percent, we could levy two million six hundred thirty-three thousand and seven dollars. That's calculation one. I did calculation two, which takes, line sixteen takes, um, what was levied for the base year, which is line fifteen, previous tax year value, with taxable valuation is that forty-two million eight hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and sixteen was our taxable valuation in twenty twenty-four. The previous year mill rate that we used was, um, take line sixteen divided by line seventeen. Line nineteen is, um, numbers that I received from our tax director, new property value was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand and ten dollars. Line twenty, we didn't have, nothing applies there. Line twenty-one is any expired exceptions taxable value of sixty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine. Line twenty-two is any property that's been removed from the taxable va- value, um, ninety-one thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars, and these I received from Christine, our tax director.
Those are like exemptions, like?
Yes, and, and you go onto your sheet here, it'll actually explain, like, nine nineteen examples are new construction and property added for annexation. Um, line twenty-one is any, um, use the current year expired exception taxable value, and line, line twenty-two would be, examples would be, um, and destruction of property, or demolition of property, or removal of instructions or improvements, a loss of annexation to another district, wind turbines, and, so tho- those are actually decreases, line twenty-two would be property that was removed for that reason. Okay, what am I add here now?
Line twenty.
Line twenty, there wasn't anything, and line twenty-one, I just went through that, and line twenty-two I went through. So, line twenty-three would be line nineteen plus line twenty plus line twenty-one minus line twenty-two. Line fourteen would be line twenty-three times line eighteen divided by a thousand, and this was, this sheet was given out to us by the state, it calculates it out itself, after I interlaced the numbers in the course. Um, line twenty-five, we didn't have any expired temporary mill levy amounts. Then line twenty-six is line twenty-four minus line twenty-five. Line twenty-seven would be adjusted year levy, it's line sixteen plus line twenty-six, and then twenty-eight would be three percent of line twenty-seven, which is seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. So with this calculation, the three percent. So with this calculation, the three percent would be two million six hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So then I went on to calculation, calculation, um, three. Line thirty is the same as line twenty-nine. Line thirty-one would be what I'm expecting to levy for tax dollars um, with the county funds is four million eighty-eight thousand and eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Line thirty-two, I didn't have any new or new increased levy authority. Line thirty-three is property tax levy authority increase above zero mills. And what that is, the only one that applied there would be the airport. Because we didn't levy it, there was zero mills levied last year. I was, I put that hundred sixty thousand four hundred on there, you don't have to, um, that gets subtracted on, on this calculation three. Line thirty-four doesn't apply, we don't have no bonded debt. Line thirty-five would be, um, special assessments levy to pay off the debt would be, um, the, um, leases for that road equipment, I could put that on there. And then, I don't have anything in thirty-six or thirty-seven, it doesn't apply to us. Line thirty-eight A is the emergency levy, because we don't, we don't need to, um, use that on a cap calculation, so we take it off of there. Thirty-eight B is the same thing with the water district. And then forty-two was that not NTD Y, would be that unorganized road district, what I used in, um, calculation one. So the difference would be two thousand, two million five hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-three, which comes to an unused cap amount of eighty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-six, so we can, and we're not even, we can carry the three percent over to next year, because we're not even using the three percent.
Right, so next year's three percent cap doesn't go off of what we levy this year, we can carry that over.
We can carry the three percent over, so next year, if we needed to use the three percent, we'd have another three percent we could use.
Right.
Okay.
And that's the key from advocating for maxing out all the time. Like, if you can get by with less, you get by with less, and you're allowed to carry over, that way you have a little bit of reserve, so.
There you go.
So otherwise, everybody would just max it out.
They'd max it all.
Because you can't.
Right. I mean, and it's up to you guys, I can put more in there if you want me to use some of it, but I.
Hey, at least we're not twelve percent over.
No.
Because that's a lot tougher to figure out, that's a lot tougher.
Okay, then the next sheet, you know, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but it's, I told you that the road district had to have a separate cap calculation, because, um, their taxable valuation is not the whole county, because the cities are not included, nor is Campbell. So I had to do a separate calculation on there, um.
For the road district?
Yeah, and not, line one was pretty, pretty simple, because none of those applied. Um, you don't, you can't, if you were to see levy or the water district off of that, because it's not included on line one. Line one tax levies for twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two was just what we levy for unorganized road. So I couldn't, subtracting that other stuff. I could subtract from calculation two, I was able to, um, to put in line nineteen and twenty-one and twenty-two like I did in the previous sheet. But when the bottom line comes after I did calculation three to the next page, we, um, we were under the unused cap amount of three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which I can carry over point five seven percent into next year. So we're within that three percent, we're not going over anything there. And then the next one would be the soil conservation. I had to do a separate calculation for them, because they, they're not part of the twelve hundred category. They're like in a two thousand category, they have their own districts, so I had to do a separate calculation for them. And they're actually gonna have three percent, um, excess also. So we're not using their three percent at all. I mean, they, they can carry that over. And then I had to do one for the hospital also, you bring these on live, Josh, I don't know.
Yep.
Um, the hospital turned out pretty good, too. There, they have an excess percentage of point one six percent. So I was pretty impressed how that all turned out, I was really worried about this three percent, but once I started working on it, I was happy the way it all turned out.
The way it turned out.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Stressed out for nothing.
You sound like, you sound like an expert going through it, so.
It sounds good.
Yeah.
If you don't know it, you gotta be snowed.
Nope.
Sounds pretty good.
Yeah, that's how fooled.
Yeah.
No, I think it looks good, you gotta break out the pages here, it's good.
You got us fooled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like you got it down pat.
Oh.
And then we'll, we'll go to this next sheet next, I do this for you guys every year, the mill levies, it's the blue and white one. This has nothing to do with that three percent now, this is something, I give you guys this every year, it was within your handout there. No, you got the clip on it, Dan. Within that clip, on, on top of your budget book, Dan.
You got it?
You've got it right there, you're touching it.
Take your clip off. You got it in there.
Yeah.
Course it's bad.
I got it right here.
Yep.
Okay. So this has nothing to do with that three percent, this is something I do for you guys every year. I've got on the left the twenty twenty-four, the total levies that we levied. And then on the right, I got the twenty twenty-five, what we're expected to levy. So there is gonna be a total mill increase of one point two four mills. Um, you'll see a big difference on, like, the capital projects levy, last year we did seven mills. We had the ninety thousand dollars into the roof that we had put in there. And then I think the road department had like two hundred some thousand of work they wanted done. So this year they only put in a hundred thousand, and I would put fifty thousand in for a roof that creates that there's only like thirty some thousand, but I put it up to fifty. Um, so we're able to drop that levy down. And then the emergency fund also, I, I did put in point nine mills. The century code says if you have in the emergency fund equivalent to, what, fifteen mills would bring in a county with a population of five thousand or less, so fifteen mills would be like six hundred and forty some thousand. And we do have six hundred thousand in there, so I don't wanna levy any more and get myself into trouble.
Right.
Wait. You're cutting from the emergency fund? I was just thinking it was funny, because the first year ex commissioner, you got mad at me when I wanted to do that, so I was.
I don't think we had six hundred thousand.
No, we didn't, I just thought we had enough, but I wanted to cut it, then you were like, you don't do that, so I just don't pick on you right now, so.
Well, two years ago.
No, you're right, I mean, I, I always agree, like, there's a, there's a limit where it's like, we only need so much.
When I went with that cap calculation, where it showed the levies in twenty-three, I had zero for emergency, because that's that year we had that terrible winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might, we might get that.
We used.
We might get it this year.
We used like five hundred thousand out of there, but then we just state declared emergency, and we got five hundred back, so.
But a half million dollars in the emergency fund sounds like a lot, but it.
It's not, yeah.
It goes fast if you have a serious emergency.
Yeah.
But you also gotta follow what the century code says, too.
I gotta get that feeling.
So the second page would be the same thing as the fourth page, only it's the unorganized road district. Um, there's not gonna be any mill increase, because we did eighteen mills last year, and this year we're gonna do eighteen mills also. Like I said before, we have to do the eighteen mills, or we can't get any of that flex grant money that John was talking about earlier. Then the next page, um, is the, the tax revenue that we received. In twenty twenty-four, all those tax entities, we be, we levied three million five hundred thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. This year, I, we're proposing three million six hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and eleven cents, which is a increase of a hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, which is a four point six eight increase. Okay?
Yep. Any questions? Next sheet.
Okay, next sheet, um, I'm gonna increase the revenue in unorganized road to that seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty cents. And it's eighteen mills was last year, eighteen mills is this year, the increase is because the property valuation went up compared to last year, but we have to do this, otherwise we can't get any of that flex fund. Okay, now the yellow book.
So that's pretty much it, Joe. Pretty much tonight, I think, pretty.
You what? Do you? But tonight is easier, right, she said you don't have so much others, he said he gets to do this tonight again.
Right, Joe.
Yeah. The first page, I just put in our lease payments, um, so you guys own, you know, it's nice to have that, so we do this every year, so we know how much to levy in the county road and bridge fund for it.
Marcy, Marcy, do you have that up here?
No, I don't. And then, of course, the next page, I have the index. I made an index for you, so I have the fund numbers all on the left side, if you, if you're curious on a fund, you, it's easy having an index, so.
Yep.
Pages one through five is the general fund. Um, appropriation is gonna be, like, on page, Schedule B, page one, the appropriation is three million seven hundred thirty-four thousand seven thirty dollars and ninety-four cents. The budgeted out transfers is the nine-one-one general, where we're gonna be short twelve thousand six hundred and two dollars, so I, I transfer out of the general fund into the nine-one-one fund to cover the, the shortfall in that. Um, I did increase the cash reserve, because as your appropriation increases, I'd like to have a little bit more into the cash reserve. So the bottom line is we're gonna be levying two million twenty-five thousand one dollars and eleven cents. And I don't think that you guys want me to go through all the revenue.
Is that enough cash reserve? In the past, is that enough cash reserve, the four fifty?
Never know.
You don't know?
Well, it's, it's hard to know, because even like Marla said, you go through and even just like your emergency fund, you think you depleted, but if it's that bad, where you're depleting your emergency fund, there's usually some kind of state or federal money that comes in. Same with cash on hand, I mean, you know, you also don't know what kind of permits and projects are gonna come in, or other funding mechanisms through legislative stuff, so it's, it's hard to know if four hundred thousand is more than or not.
I did increase a hundred thousand from last year.
Right, so.
So go, I gotta ask, it's probably your dumb question, I ask, what on this permit deal, with this battery deal, where is most of that money go into?
Permit fund.
Permit fund, yeah, okay. And then what percentage gets allocated amongst different departments?
No, no.
Okay, we stay as separate.
That's funding that we allocate.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so then we'll move on to.
That's the non-budgeted funds, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah.
I mean.
Move on to page six, Schedule C.
What page was that?
Page six, Schedule C. So this, what I, what I do here is, this tells me how much money I gotta levy. So line nine kind, gives me that, like, you take the county road and bridge, we're gonna appropriate one million three, one million thirty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. And then after I enter all the, what I'm estimating for cash reserve and for cash investments at the end of this year, estimated revenue for next year, I'm gonna have to levy five hundred thousand. Now, I, I do wanna mention that this county road and bridge fund, as you guys recall, was always, the maximum's always ten mills. We have the federal aid fund, that was five mills. Uh, North Dakota legislators repealed the federal aid fund, so we couldn't, we can't levy it anymore this fall. We could levy it last year, but no more this fall. But we voted on it to take those mills from the federal aid and put them into the county road and bridge fund, and that measure did pass in the twenty twenty-four primary election. So when Russ did his, uh, budget to me, I did add three hundred some thousand on to his budget, because we would be short highway tax, but you can still levy more dollars in there if you want to, because on that one sheet, I showed that we're only gonna be levying, what is it, twelve or something like that? We're only gonna be levying eleven point three one, and you can go up to fifteen mills in there if you want to. I'm just bringing that out here, so if you want more money for gravel, this is where we could add more.
Well, probably a smart thing to do, help keep all your gravel.
Twelve, yeah.
For other, the other road roads, problems.
Okay, so then the next one would be federal aid, now we don't levy that in there anymore, that's done with, but there is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that's left in there that we're gonna have, we'll spend it next year. We're supposed to clear it out and make it zero, so I figured we can use that for some gravel, too, so that'll be in there for that. And then highway tax, um, Russ had figured nine hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, and I'm gonna be short, that's why it's in the red, that three hundred and eighteen thousand, but I did appropriate that amount in the county road and bridge fund, so we're gonna be okay with the road funds there. And then unorg- or unorganized road district, like I said, I did increase, I put five hundred thousand in there for some gravel. And then the next one is the permit fund, I, I put in that we're gonna spend two point five million, but I don't know, I have to put something in there. Okay. Um, page seven, the only levy in here is that emergency fund. The rest of them, like the, there's Prairie Dog Fund, we're gonna go through those ni- in those next pages, Schedule C. But this just kinda shows what was appropriated, and like I said, the bottom line would be how much had to be levied. The only fund on this page that would be a tax levy would be the emergency fund. And then on the next page, again, the only fund on here is the capital projects fund, we're gonna, I'm gonna levy two hundred and nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. And then on the next page is that the state medical center, we have to, the North Dakota century code says we have to do, we have to levy one mill to the state medical center, and that's mandatory that we do that, we send that money off. And then page ten, um, there isn't any levy on there, those are just other appropriation funds, and then page eleven does have the two, the county agent and the VA officer, we can levy the tax dollars in there, and that all goes into the general fund, and the expenditures are paid out of the general fund. So page twelve is the county road and bridge fund. So I take from page twelve, and I took it over to that Schedule, um, B, where you guys just seen, this is where I get the numbers from. So the bottom, the top part is all the revenues I'm expecting to get in, and then the bottom part is what Russ put into his budget. But like I said, I added that three hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. So this one here, I, so I'm just go up to fifteen mills, if you'd like to, I could add more in here for gravel if you want to.
Well, we kinda have a gravel plan, so probably we should at least discuss it. Maybe we've got more exploring, we've got some.
We're rushing, we're more looking, yeah.
I mean, that's gonna be a problem here down the road for us, so we might as well tackle it sooner than later.
So fifteen mills minus what we have on there now is eleven point three one, would be three point six nine more mills, which would be two. What did I say, we need three more mills?
Yeah.
You could go to fifteen, correct?
So three extra mills would bring in a hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and five dollars.
Which just scratches the problem.
It's just a small.
I mean.
But it, yeah, it's okay.
But it helps.
Huh? It helps, yeah. Okay.
Okay, then the next, the next budget, um, on page thirteen, um, that's just what's left over in the federal aid fund. There's like a hundred and eighty-six thousand left over that we need to spend, because that's no longer levy. It's like I said, um, that levy wouldn't feel, so that's done and over, but we can use that for gravel, too, if Russ wants to use that.
We can, okay.
And then page fourteen is highway tax, that's, um, for highway distribution, the revenues, so we only get in, we only get in like five hundred and some thousand in revenue, revenues from highway tax distribution. And, you know, we spend nine hundred and some thousands, so the shortage I'm gonna have to take out of the county road and bridge fund. Which is fine, it's working out. And then the next one is road district, this is where we receive that extra revenue in, um, on the House Bill ten sixty-six, Operation Prairie Dog. I received three hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And so in order for us to be able to levy the eighteen mills, I did stick, on the next page, you're gonna see where I went in, uh, no, it's on the next page, on the this page, I did add gravel on the bottom part, you'll see where I added gravel, five hundred thousand dollars. Any questions so far? I'm kinda going fast, there's a lot. Okay, and then page sixteen is the permit fund. So, you look at the revenue, on vehicles, that would be the load pass, I'm expecting five thousand dollars to come in this year and next year. And then the road would be like permits, like approach permits and other utility permits, I put that in there. And then the miscellaneous was what Next Era is gonna be giving us. In 2025, we got that three hundred and ninety-six thousand, and the remainder of that, put in twenty-six.
You said they haven't paid that yet, huh? But we gotta be down there at the thirty day mark.
Yeah, next week, we'll be.
And then I wonder, when is the Public Service Commission survey that, was that November, right? I thought. On their schedule?
Oh, their hearing date?
Yeah.
Lord, yeah.
I didn't think it was scheduled yet, but it is, it should be on the website.
So, and I did have, I appropriated two and a half millions, I didn't know. But this, this money, you guys can use however you see. I mean, you could use it for gravel too, but.
You bet.
Around retrievers, maybe.
Yeah. Yes. What was the cost of those retrievers, Russ? On those six, was it, or a set?
Hundred and...
Twenty thousand, nine fifty a piece, and then there's like shipping, few extra costs or something like that, but just save twenty-one thousand a piece.
So, a hundred and thirty grand, roughly. If he got six of them, six of them, that's great.
Yeah, I think he was gonna change his number to seven.
I did, I added that six right away, with some thinking that we'd probably get two on the next era, but I was gonna put it up to seven if, if we can.
Yeah.
Well, we got that budgeted, so if we have to take it out of there, we sure can, if we don't have it someplace else, but. That bid was good for how long?
Thirty days.
I can't imagine it's gonna change much, but it, it could.
We are five or six weeks out to get a bill, so I mean, it's gonna be fall till we get them anyway. I mean, we don't.
But we can't use it this fall, dude.
No, not no more.
It'd be next spring, yeah.
Yeah, that would be it.
Okay, line sixteen, well, that's the, or page sixteen, that's the permit fund. Page seventeen is the Prairie Dog. We received in 2025, we received one million, two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and six cents. Next year, we should be receiving the four hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred. And this can only be used for road projects, because I have to do a reporting, every November, I have to report what we use the money on. If you don't use it for specific road projects, you have to pay the money back.
So, specific road projects, it's gonna be federal aid, huh?
So, like, no, so like, it, I don't think it has to be on federal aid projects.
It does not, no, Aaron says no.
So, we, we applied for that SRS money, for that Cattail Bay Road, and then our cost of it, we can use that Prairie Dog for. And that's what John had said when he was in your document about that.
Okay.
There's some limitations on it, like, I don't think you can use it, you can only use a small amount for like the purchase of gravel and things, it's, it's a project-based funding.
It's gotta be a gravel project.
Right, like, you can't just like crush gravel with it, you have to like hire out to lay gravel with it. Or, the other thing is like servicing debt, there's a, like, you can't just use it to like cover bonds and stuff like that. It's not meant to do that, it's meant to do for.
For road, yeah.
Additional projects, which never made sense to me, because nor- normally, if you're covering debt, that's for a project you already did that. Probably would have been Prairie Dog funds, why can't you use it to pay for it, but they've made that restriction in there.
So, like, last year, we did the Couch Crossing, and we also did that other crossing, where was that at?
I do believe it's gotta be engineered, or has, there's gotta be some level of engineering involved with it too. It can't just be a, like, a county internal project, it's gotta be.
It's gotta be approved by engineers.
It's gotta have some kind of engineering, because that's a part of the reporting process. There needs to be like engineering letters and things like that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Well, now you know who's lobbying for the Prairie Dog.
Yeah, right.
Right, you got that, alright.
It's not me to say.
So, you'll notice, we were in the red at the end of twenty-four, because we spent more money on that Couch project than on that other project. But what's, what was it, the Woolon?
The Woolon Box Caller.
Yeah, right, that big box.
So, we were in what, so, we're in the black now, because, but we're gonna be using this revenue to help offset that.
I've got nothing but praise out of that Box Caller, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, everybody that's used it is just overwhelmed, to be honest with you, it's.
So, I just do wanna say, I don't think we're gonna be using the one, I had appropriated one point, one million, one hundred and ninety thousand. I don't think we're gonna need all that for the Cattle Project, so there's another project you guys can.
We'll see when we're done.
You know, when it's all done and over, we'll see what costs, but.
Blacktop at Stasburg?
Yeah, that's, well, our cost in that option two would be what, nineteen, eighteen grand, right?
Well, if it gets accepted, I'm saying, if it doesn't, it's.
If it gets accepted, yeah.
And then page eighteen is flex funding. So, you know, when we have this grant money come in here, I have to have, I have to have a fund where I can appropriate the revenue, and where I can appropriate the expenditures. So, the flex fund grant revenue, I figured it's gonna be two million that we'll probably get in next year, that we're gonna need, you know, and then you spin that back out. But the next line, that flex funding incentive bill, twenty-twelve, that is revenue that we received just here in August, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, and we're expected to receive another forty-nine thousand next year. That money can be used wherever you guys see fit. It's gotta be used for roads, but you don't have to use it for a specific project, because there's no reporting there. So, that can also be used for gravel or.
Some of that stuff is so ear-tagged, you can't do nothing with it, yeah.
But that, but that a hundred and eighty-three thousand, that forty-nine, you can use whatever you want.
Yeah, we have.
Because they passed this as part of the highway tax distribution.
So, we have the hundred thousand it's gonna cost to do the chip seal on these county roads in town here? In this budget?
Well, we were gonna do that on the Prairie Dog.
Okay, alright.
So, that, that remainder of the federal aid?
Yep.
Money that has to be spent down?
Yep.
Does that still have to follow the requirements of federal aid, though?
No, because we, there was, there was more money in there, and, you know, last year's budget, I put in four hundred thousand to pay for these gravelers.
Right.
When the legislators met in January, they repealed that legacy money, we didn't get nothing. And so, I told John that we can use, if you're doing graveling on the federal aid roads, we can use the federal aid money to pay for some of that graveling, so that's what we're doing.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because if there's roughly a hundred and eighty-some thousand, and you have this hundred and eighty-some from the flex fund, and you're at three hundred and sixty, I mean, you're very close to what we were just talking about for crushing gravel with that. If the restriction from the federal aid is gone, because they repealed that.
No, we have, we're supposed to spend this down, it's supposed to.
Right, but it's just excess funds, it still does, we don't have to use it in the federal aid guidelines, like you're, because now that it's repealed, and those are excess, we just, we have to spend the fund now. So, that's what I'm saying, if you can take that, and you can take this flex funding, that you're already about seventy percent to where we wanted to be for crushing gravel.
Because we're, we're crushing gravel for the federal aid roads, so.
Exactly, and the, and the question I'd have for Russ too, is since it's getting late enough in the year, they typically were pretty friendly about maybe invoicing us right at the end of the year, to where we could pay it in the next year, so that way we'd have a budget start over.
Yes, he said he's flexible on that as well, he said we can work on it, so.
Well, because that would, that would make this process a little easier, if we're already trying to appropriate for next year, if we could be paying that bill in, let's just say, January right away.
Right.
Then, then that would, you know, because otherwise, last year, we didn't probably appropriate maybe enough to make it work, so.
The auditors are gonna want me to close it out, so, so get better. Okay, the next one, page nineteen, is state revenue sharing, that's, we get fifty thousand dollars a year from state, revenue from the state, and we use it, you know, we give, we make contributions to the library, the fire department's tri-comy fair, I stick our elevator maintenance plan in, maintenance plan in there, and then I do a miss notice of sixty thousand, that's where we've been paying a lot of these rotten bills, the lawyer fees. And then I also stuck in there twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, seventy-nine cents for Linton City Specials, that we're gonna have to pay next year. Okay, the page twenty is the emergency fund. So, I appropriated three hundred and fifty thousand to spend next year, I don't know if we're gonna need it, hope we're not. We thought if we need it. And then the next page is just the auditorium, I have to do a budget for that, I put our, Craig rents out the auditorium, I put the funding in there, and then we buy a few things here and there, out of there. Like, this year, we received sixty thousand dollars for miscellaneous revenue from Linton Lions Club, gave us some money to redo, I think it's the kitchen, right, Gary?
No, it'd be stage.
Oh, the stage.
Not kitchen, no.
Yeah. So, that's where that extra revenue came from. Normally, it's just revenue coming from when we rent it out for graduations or what have you.
Is there still a lot of funds, like in that gaming? Like, the, I mean, the Witten Gaming, the Lions Club and all these, there's still a lot of money in those organizations?
Yeah, we're setting pretty good.
Okay, okay. Because I think it really picked up since these machines came about, and these, like, with these bars.
Boy, that's, that's one that all drove off state, like, and it's legalized throughout the states, for everyone.
Okay, the page twenty-two is the nine-one-one, that Gary takes care of. That's where we were gonna be short that twelve thousand, six hundred and two dollars that I'm transferring in from the general fund. Page twenty-three is just, we have to appropriate money for state grants, that's written. So, we have appropriation for the revenue, we have appropriation for the expenditures. Page twenty-four is a Linton Police Contract, we don't have a contract with them anymore, but we still have some revenue in there that Gary will be spending out on vehicle maintenance and miscellaneous. Line twenty-five is the capital projects, that's where we pay the capital jail expenditures out of there for prisoners and doing some maintenance to keep up the jail. And also, the road department put in there a hundred thousand, because they can levy in that to, to do some capital improvements, like to the shops or whatever, so he put a hundred thousand in there. And then Craig wanted some more roof repairs, so he asked me to put fifty thousand in there for that. Page twenty-six, that's Sheriff twenty-four-seven project that they do, I don't know if you wanna explain that, that's just.
The twenty-four, twenty-four-seven sobriety program, basically, it's been around for a number of years, based over decades. And that's where either post-conviction or pre-conviction, as a condition of bond, it might be on an ankle bracelet for a DUI alcohol-related offense, or the drug patch for a drug-related offense, basically. So, that cost is, that's all run through the Attorney General's office, and the defendant is normally responsible for the cost of that program, but more recently, the courts have ruled that the judges can waive those fees, and then it becomes a responsibility of the county road, which didn't go over very well statewide, obviously, but that is an option. But so far, nobody's waived those fees, even in the past, before that ruling came out, when defendants says they couldn't pay for it, like, the drug patches is fifty-five dollars a week, and the ankle bracelet is six dollars a day, when they said they couldn't come up with the money. But when given the option, either returning back to jail as a condition of bond, or pay the fund, they usually pay the funds.
Okay, then page twenty-seven is Hazards Chemicals, is one of Mary Singer's, I didn't even know she, where she gets her revenue from, I could, these companies that have these big, and hydrous tanks or something, maybe have to pay.
Well, that's a part of that committee that meets once a year too, is it not, like, with?
That's something else, you see, that's nothing to do with it.
That's not the same deal with the fire departments and the county, huh?
But then I think what she has trainees with, is having chemical, that's where the expenditures come from. But I don't, I just don't ask questions on that, when she, the revenue comes in and goes back out. Page twenty-eight, county extension, also, they get some revenue in for things that, and then they spend it back out on. That's not in addition to their, to their regular budget. I think a lot of this stuff is grant money that comes in and you spend it out.
Right, you have to create separate funds for them to be able, but they can't go to the general fund in anything.
Right.
They can't.
So, it's not like levy funds, it's just extra funds, like state dollars, reimbursable stuff, grants, yeah.
And then the District Court Trust Fund, that's a fund that goes to the court's office. Last year, we only spent like twenty-five dollars out of there, so I have to appropriate something. So, I appropriate a thousand dollars every year, and I appropriate it to go back out again. Like I said, last year, there was only like twenty-five dollars. And then page thirty is the state medical center, state medical levy, which we're required to levy that one mil out of. And then page thirty-one is the domestic violence, that's a court thing, I don't know. And then page thirty-two is like a reimbursable fund, so like if we have an insurance claim, and we, we have to pay, let's say we pay like the body shop their fertile windshield, and then we, we paid out the reimbursable, and we put it back in again after we get the insurance check. So, it's pretty much an in and out. Real estate tax, we do have people that pay their taxes ahead of time. So, if somebody comes in like today and wants to put five hundred dollars towards a twenty-five taxes, we stick it in this real estate tax fund. After we run the tax statements, we take it out of here, and we post it towards their taxes then. Asset forfeiture fund, that's for the, how we share, for the sheriff's office, I think. If there's the asset forfeiture, there's still some money in there from.
Yeah, that's required by the AG's office, now, we have to submit an annual thing, that there's asset forfeiture issues with our office for arrest, research, and seizure.
And then page thirty-five, that's Document Preservation Fund, that's for the court records, or, excuse me, for the county recorder's office, where people will, will pay to have their documents recorded, so that, that money goes in here. And then page thirty-six, I, I just have a county vehicle policy, I'll take some money out of the general fund every once in a while, just to help, like, we want new tires on one of our vehicles, or oil changes, or whatever.
Yep.
We have something in here. And then page thirty-seven, we have a box or school retention collection, we're still collecting some older taxes that come in, so we have to keep that for three years, until, until that kind of takes care of itself. And then opioid settlements, Joe gave me some checks here a few weeks ago for some opioid settlement collections of almost twelve thousand dollars. And I talked to the AG's office, and it can only be used to like purchase equipment for like drug and alcohol-related things, like some communists will probably buy a K-9 or whatever.
Okay.
I mean, I just threw that out, they can buy, just throw it something with drug and alcohol.
Well, opioid settlement collections, explain it to me, what is it?
That was through the pharmacy company, I may be joking, give you a better idea, but it's, through the pharmacy company, the states on behalf of the, well, losses, and there was a settlement, and that's where that money came from.
Class actical, right?
Clashback, same as the tobacco settlement.
So, we probably won't ever get any of that anymore, this is telling you.
Don't you doubt?
There'll be more.
There'll be more?
Yeah. There's another round of settlements coming out.
Okay.
So, continue to opt in, to accept the settlement.
Okay.
And then the last two pages, like Schedule D, there's two pages of that, that's for senior citizens, historical water, county public health, weed control, county hospital, next page, so conservation, and then the airport. And then the page, the last few pages is, senior citizens, it's an in and out. We collect the taxes, we collect the housing and blue, the transmission taxes, and we disperse it back out to them every month. Same thing with the historical society and the water, public health, the weed, health, hospital, soil, and there'll be the airport too, as we collect the taxes and the revenue, we will disperse it out. Any questions? I know I went through this kinda fast.
A lot of numbers.
So, within this budget, I did figure in a step and grade that we had talked about. You guys told me to put it in there, and I did. I gave you guys all this sheet last month, I don't know if you still have it, what the cost was to do.
No, no, it was, oh, yeah, yeah. You guys have?
Now, what?
I mean.
I think there might be.
I think there was some.
I mean.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. There wasn't any. If there was, we straightened it out, and it should all be in there then. And then also, Christine came. And then also Christine came, Christina came in here last month and wanted something, changes, I did, that's included in the budget, so all those were in there. Any changes that, you know, came from last month, that was the only one, I believe, right? I've got one right here. And then I actually got the new step and grade too, I typed up so you guys with the changes. Robin wanted to speak on the step and grade.
I didn't know if you guys were gonna have a copy, so that works out really well. I just wanted to throw it out there.
You gotta pull the mic up, please.
Okay, I just wanted to throw it out there, this all looks really good, but just on, for Wayne, he was bumped up for a proposal, he was bumped up to six-two. Just based on his experience and responsibilities, I just wanted to make a proposal on this, that he'd be bumped up to a six-four, six-five. Just kind of wanted to run it by you, if you had any questions on it or anything.
So he's at one here on this six-two?
He's at, currently, currently he's at a six-one, the proposal would be a six-two.
Oh, and you're.
And I'm just.
Correcting.
A six-four, six-five.
Based on comments from Gary at last month's meeting about experience, responsibilities, things like that, when Robin went over this with me. My previous experience and my experience in another division of the courthouse as well and responsibilities. I'm able to determine that responsibilities in the clerk's office are just as great, if not greater than some of the other admin positions that are in this bill as well, so.
Honestly, I, and I think according to the recommendations, you'd go to a six-four without justification, right Gary, am I right? On the, on the topic points, you'd like him to start, start step one to four, a five or above would need justification to the commissioners, if I remember right.
Not exactly, you know, any and all, everything has to be justified.
Well, right.
But, but the idea was in the, in the guidelines that entry level would be one to four.
Right.
You know, for the department head to start their base again, but you have to justify that, with any position, experience, training, certification, things like that. And if you are going to start out a new employee, anything higher than a six or a step four, then that should be taken to the commission for approval. So that's, that's an entry level position, any entry level.
Can the department head address that, Gary?
Oh, absolutely, and that's like this whole thing, if, you know, this, these recommendations are just that, they're recommendations by the community. If any employee, if any department head doesn't agree with the recommendations, it is their obligation to come here as they are today.
Yeah.
To look for change or, and so forth, then it's up to you guys to, to look at that and weigh that.
I don't have a problem.
No, I don't either, I guess.
With Robin's recommendation.
Robin would, no, I would say better than that.
I think Wayne's experience in other areas in the county is invaluable, he's also a council member and. Yeah, for the city of Linton, he's, he's got a lot of experience, so I, me personally, I don't have an issue.
Everybody else?
You'd go, you'd go, where would you go, Robin? You'd go to a?
I, I guess I would ask, go to a six-five.
Okay.
So I guess I, I would probably just disagree a little bit, and the only reason why I say that is it's got absolutely nothing to do with Wayne or any of your job performance, but. When I look at some of the proposed six-fives and six-sixes, we have like Lisa Turner's and Leanne, who both have, you know, more experience, especially Leanne has over five years. I feel like we might be treading a little too close.
Which is why when I talked with Robin, I didn't discuss anything with the, you know, with the grade, it was more so on the step side.
Sure.
There are departments that are looking here.
Even like a six-four.
I don't wanna pick out names or anything, but there are people that are above me that I have more responsibility than.
Yeah, but I'm just, I mean, I'm just using it as just a face comparison of, you know, deputy type offices in another department.
Yeah.
You know, that's where I.
Right.
I don't wanna see too much of like a similarity then too, when you would do have maybe up to a five-year difference, because now, now you're starting to almost devalue that years of experience for the next box. So now you're moving that up to a four or five, well then that four or five wants to be a six or a seven, now you're starting to alienate each other. I don't disagree with, you know, seeing an increase with your prior experience, but going from maybe a two to a five is probably a little too much, maybe looking at going from like a two to a three or four and then.
Yeah.
Just, it does gain separation from the other employee that seems to have even less experience.
Just to touch on something, though, Wayne, this says one prior year of service, how many years of service do you have to the county?
To the county, about a year and a half.
Okay.
I just think it's a drastic step increase on some of these, when I look at, you're looking at, wow.
Yeah, four might be, feel a little better.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Three.
Yep.
I just don't wanna get too far away from the process, cause I feel like we're very close.
Yeah.
And then it's like, as you start, it's just like the game changer.
Yeah, right.
Start pulling a block away and all of a sudden it gets a little unstable, we, you know, same thing we had talked about before. Not every position here is maybe even gonna be perfectly properly valued, but I feel like we're a lot closer to the target. And, and maybe some of these need to be gradually, just over like a three-year period, we find some of these other valuable spots. But now we're, we're making micro adjustments to in the department versus the entire courthouse, which I feel like this is probably a lot closer to, so I. I guess I feel like probably like a six-three would probably be more appropriate in my opinion than maybe a five and then just reevaluate it again next year and see if. Just, just to make sure that we don't have too big a jumps inside these departments so soon.
Not that against anybody, but.
Right, exactly, it's just, it's more so to just try and maintain the integrity of it and, and not get too.
Crazy.
Well, you just don't wanna make too many big leaps unless there's just, you know. I mean, Robin's advocating for a department, that's what she's supposed to do.
She's supposed to.
I don't think she's wrong, I would probably just maybe. Argue a little bit of a difference in it, but. Is that a decision that has to get made today, or is that more for like the final budget October thing, or?
I'll put it in the budget and I'll let you know what the increase is next month.
Okay, so it's still a part of like a preliminary discussion essentially, like.
Do a three and a four and do so. Which I guess. Our options.
Okay. Because you don't approve this today, you gotta wait up to the.
Exactly, that's why I don't, I just, not, not that we're getting out of turn and making steps that we shouldn't, you know, what's the proper way to move forward, but the decision, we do.
What a three work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Probably like.
Totally up to you guys, I just wanted to bring it up.
Put it in as a six-three and see where the budget points and everything else is.
It should work.
I think so, yeah.
Very good.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have then.
Okay.
How much, how much was the step and grade gonna add to the?
Okay, you just, it just got passed around, did you get?
Oh, okay, I, I should've looked at it, yeah, I did look at it.
The first page is for the courthouse and the second page is for the road department.
Okay. Yeah. Good job, a lot of work, a lot of numbers. Lot of numbers, yeah, you're good.
And what did you put in, you put in the proposed grade step, right, the highest one on, okay, the highest, that's what I have, yeah. So back to this county road and bridge, are you thinking we don't need to maybe raise that mill levy because we might have. We're at about three-quarters, right, of where we need to, to pay for this gravel?
Well, if you have that additional funding from the remainder of the federal aid and plus you also have the flex funding, but the flex funding is next year's funding, not this year. Like the budget we're going over is for twenty-six, so is that, that flex funding, that's next year's.
You can actually spend some of that in twenty-five.
Well, I mean, that's, cause the question I have too is that the federal aid remainder is what we have now. So going forward, if we wanted to do this gravel process, we could do maybe like a half billing, cause we do have funding we probably need to use by the end of the year. And then build the remainder into twenty-six and then utilize either the flex funding or another. So I know they've done that in the past, since you're always crushing, if they're a couple of weeks out, we have, they're not gonna get most of it done until Halloween, well then by the time they invoice it into November, then you could, you know. Maybe they could invoice fifty percent, we pay that up with funds we have this year and then.
I had put it in that you were gonna spend it in twenty-five.
Okay, so we actually could bill out.
And we don't, they'll carry it to twenty-six.
Right, so we could bill out maybe even a majority of it, if not all of it this year, right, so. So I guess with that discussion, I'd say we'd probably move forward crushing and then we probably just have to decide on a number. Generally, that's what we always did before, was just give Russ the approval, the crush gravel up to four hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever, whatever you think.
What do you want me to do for a number?
Well, that's what, it was roughly like four hundred and thirty-some thousand if we did twenty-five thousand tons of the two class, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand tons, twenty-five of each class. If that's what everybody wanted to do, it came out to like four hundred and.
Thirty-some thousand.
Right, so I'd say just to cover yourself, you'd probably make an approval of up to four hundred.
But that five hundred thousand won't be until next year though, in that, that I budgeted for a non-organized road.
Right, but we're talking about utilizing the flex funding and private federal aid funding to, to take a majority of it anyway and then. Hopefully you got a small enough amount, you could probably use the remainder in county road and bridge or road district to probably offset the difference. I don't think we're like, we have no money for, we're just, we'd have to find it from two or three separate funds.
But you know, you gotta keep in mind though, some of that federal aid money though is used into paying these gravels now though, you might use that on.
Sure, well, so that's where, like you said, if we have funding next year for doing some graveling, that's where we would probably just have to maybe partially invoice it at the end of the year and pay it and then pay the rest on next year. If RTS would agree to that, we could do it that way too.
What do you think, Russ?
They're pretty flexible, right?
Yeah, they are, if he's fine with that side of it.
Is he?
Yeah.
Cause we do have, I mean, twenty-five to fifty percent of it pretty much, I would say almost for sure, that we'd be able to find, so.
You know, I, I do ask, you know, like, okay, what did I say, you can do like three more mills or something like that? Probably would be a bad idea to bring half of them in now and half of them in next year because of that three percent cap, is in place next year too?
I would argue against that and say that if anything, I would utilize the permit funds to probably cover the rest, since I know, I mean.
To keep taxes down, I, I get it.
Recent events, we should have permit funds coming in in the next eighteen months, so I find it hard to wanna levy more funds when we know we have.
Yeah, I think that's a good spot to take.
I would say if anything, the remainder, the remainder funds we have in twenty-five would cover a pretty good chunk of the graveling, any bit left over, we would utilize, we would appropriate from the permit fund. That's the way I would do it, I would.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, I, I don't like the idea of raising that mill levy.
Not if we know we have funds coming in, or I mean, it'd be different if we hadn't just approved that process, but with those permit funds, probably in the next week coming in would be enough to cover most of the gravel we're gonna do, I'd say we'd be a lot better out that way.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no decision gets made today because you have to wait till you have your public hearing next month.
Right, but I guess for the.
Then you do, then you can make any decision.
For the sake of the earlier gen item, I would make a motion to. Enter into a contract with RTS shearing for gravel crushing up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's quite fifty-fifty.
Yeah, and that, yeah, maybe we can split the two, two classes of gravel, I don't know if I have to put that in the motion.
You probably should.
Well, I would say.
Two classes?
Well, I would say what we, what we wanna do, if we're gonna, if we're gonna word the motion properly, I would say, we'll enter into a contract with RTS shearing to crush twenty-five thousand tons of class thirteen. And twenty-five thousand tons of class five.
To a total of?
To a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, there you go, that'll work.
I'll second that.
You'll second my argument.
There you go.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, Gary.
Good.
Okay, what else we have to do?
Mr. Chairman, this eleven forty thing, I don't know if somebody's here for that, maybe you wanna take that eleven forty gen item?
Which one? Is that seven?
Building permit?
Building permit, so.
Yeah.
Are, are you Jeffrey?
I'm Jeff, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
What's the Jeffrey, can you take him since he's here?
Building permit for Candace Vertum, was that?
Vertum, yes.
Vertum. For placing two eight-by-forty shipping containers twenty feet apart with a roof placed to connect. For storage on lot thirty subdivision of lots twenty-two through thirty-one and lots eight B and eight C. Rudy subdivision, one A, section five township, one thirty range seventy-nine.
James, twenty.
It's not, it may not be the right person.
I thought that had to be a cash one.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
All right, so. Where he's, wants to put this, the setbacks will be good. I spoke to your wife. In the resolution. It discusses the conics is there, and one of them is only allowing one conics per lot. So they wanted to go with, go on with this project, so I suggested that he come in if he wanted to.
Right.
Talk to you guys about it and describe what this shop with the conics is all about, so.
Right, well, we're gonna use the two conics boxes, we're gonna put them twenty feet apart. And then we're gonna put pony wall on the inside of the conics boxes, two foot high, and then put rafters in a roof over the top of it and enclose the front and the back, so it'll be more like a shop. Not just like two conics boxes just sitting there, you know what I mean? So it'll be more like a shop, yeah, like that.
You're enclosing this and putting a shop door here and.
Yes.
We just want these conics boxes up against the building for storage and road proof.
What's that?
For road proof?
Road proof.
Well, for mice, whatever, no, it's their idea.
Oh, the conics boxes will be for storage, yes. And they're weatherproof and mouse-proof and all that, so we'll make a nice little work area in there too, even without storage. But it won't look like two just, two conics boxes just sitting there, you know what I mean, it'll look more like a shop.
Look more like a building, all one.
Right.
So they'll be like painted or sited or?
Yes, we'll be, we'll be painting the conics boxes white and then the front and the back will be white, steel siding.
Oh, steel siding.
Yeah, and then gray roof. And all of our buildings are pretty much, we plan on making it all match, so.
That roof would go out over the edges of the conics boxes or not?
No, no, it'd be the twenty-foot and then it'll be a one-foot overhang on each side of it, like that, yeah.
So the conics box is essentially like a lean-to to a pole building almost, like in a, like just to view it, like it's not gonna be. The conics boxes will be like the outside of the building.
Yes.
They're not gonna get framed over or anything like that.
No, no.
And you've got the doors of the conics boxes on the exterior of the building, right? You don't have doors on the inside of the building, like a lot of them come with doors along the sidelines.
No, we won't have any doors inside there, we may put a walk-in door from the inside, but other than that, no. They're just at the ends and we'll face the ends away from the road.
You pointed someone, slide a second, conics boxes on.
No, I plan on putting in piers, six piers for them to sit on, and then we'll bolt them down to the piers. There'll be six per container. And it'll be right there about where his arrow's at, yeah, in that area. Forty foot off the edge of the road, we didn't go to the center of the road, because I wasn't sure where the center of the road was, so we went. So we went, uh, fifty foot from the edge of the road, so, and then fifteen from the property line.
Christine, would that be labeled as temporary, or would that be a permanent structure?
Currently, there is no value based on conics, it's not a conics container.
Okay.
I will say that I, I wanna say the intent of limiting one per conics, one conics box per lot was. You know, probably the intent of using it as actual like storage, like lined up, like versus.
Yeah.
Using it as almost like a building material, I, I don't know if that's a, dare I say, a loophole? I mean, obviously you could still follow it, but I, I think the intent of the limiting for one was. You just did one five within a row on some of these lots, but then using two of them as like a part of the structure is.
Different.
It's different, it's different, and I think that, you know, probably wasn't a part of the intent of the resolution, so.
And you're just putting two just for storage, that's why you're doing the conics box. Well, they're. It's not the same cause.
It's our walls too, yeah.
See, actually, if you come out with a roof over the top of them, then they would be part of the building, but it'd be extra expensive.
I just meant that that's not really any different from like a lean to, like I must say, somebody's like, like a dairy barn, and then you have a lean to, it's really not a lot different than that, so.
No.
And if it's gonna be painted the same color or, or sited or whatever they end up finishing it as, it's really not a lot different than a metal pole building in that sense, as far as like the building material, so. It's, it's just a different thought.
Yeah.
Instead of cement blocks, he's using a conics box.
Probably a more, uh, sealed up building, to be honest with you, I mean, these conics containers, if they're newer. They're tighter than anything you could build.
They're too tight, you get molded them.
What's that?
You get molded them, they're too tight.
Well, you.
You plan on spray folding them like a hatch?
I, I don't know yet, we'll, we'll check on that.
You can get.
You have to have one. Is it spray foam?
No, but they should be.
Oh.
Because you get too much condensation with that.
Oh, it's a matter.
You almost need to put a vent on, like K and H put vents on all their spinner vents, because they were getting hot, I mean, they hits.
They're gonna, they're meant to go across the ocean, are they not?
Yeah. They'll flood the ocean if they fall off, that's, that's how crazy tight they are, so.
You don't get a rodent in them, guaranteed, you do not get anything in them.
Right.
They're just too tight that you get molded them.
Yeah, that's a good idea to put some vents in, I will mention that, yeah.
And you'll be restricted with the roof running off your water.
Right.
Running off these conics boxes, you'll be restricted, right?
I guess I, I personally don't know if I really see any downside to this specific. Does, I, it's not really a lot different than if you were just totally building a pole building with the. It's not, the intent isn't to like litter the lot with conics boxes.
Right, no.
You know.
No, it's actually a really good idea, honestly, it's, it's a.
And then what is the big issue with conics boxes, right? Different colors, different sizes.
Visibility, yeah.
If they're, if they're the same size, the same color, part of the same structure, that kind of alleviates the issue most people have with conics boxes, am I wrong on that?
Yeah, rusty and they look like.
Exactly, like if the idea is to conform with the building, I, I just don't know if I really.
A lot of their names upside, the older ones.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're not trying to do that sort of, a development area, not at all.
And when I was.
Well, we're getting new ones also. One.
These are all gonna be new?
One trip boxes is what we're planning to get.
They look like Brad, yeah.
Yeah, they look like Brad.
Right, cause the issue when I was a part of that resolution was that we had pictures from people where they were showing just.
Yeah.
There were green ones, brown ones, some of them had, you know, Russian writing on the side, and they were just, whatever, some of these guys could get their hands on it, it was, it was unsightly, I mean, it was getting to the point where. You needed to have some kind of restriction to it, where I don't feel like this fits the guideline.
What are you gonna do, sandblast them, David?
What's that?
Are you gonna sandblast them, David?
I, I'm not sure yet, we are, uh, gonna go down and get those and have them delivered to the house. So. If we need to paint them, yes, we'll probably sand them and. And paint them, yeah. But being.
They got quite a engine latch system on them.
Yeah, yes, they do, and you can lock them up tight.
Well, they're, they're tight, they're rubber sealed up.
Yeah, yeah, they're great, I, I came up with this idea a while ago.
They're not cheap anymore.
Yeah, they're, they're forty one hundred dollars delivered at one point, and they went up another six hundred dollars just recently.
Yeah.
So, the sooner I get them, I mean, I mean, they fluctuate a lot.
Mine got used for one ship, the invoice was still.
Joe's thing.
Right. Yeah, that's what they said, these are, these are all trip. And the one trip ones, I think are fifty eight hundred delivered.
Okay, they're higher.
Yeah.
The one that made the one pass.
Yep, and that's what we plan on getting, so. I have not been down to look at them to see what color they are yet. What they're looking.
Floors, that's what's so amazing about them.
Yeah. Yeah, they're great.
It's wood floors, the front and back, I was, the front and the back are metal, they probably like eighty three feet.
Right.
And it's one tonne of roof. And all rid of it.
Yep. And the next thing about those boxes, and when I, when I go and put the roof on, I can weld the bolts to it. To bolt down the whole roof structure also, so that was a, a plus for me.
Christine, are we ever gonna come, like, who has to come up with a, I mean, conics containers are bolt, if you bolt them to piers, they're, they're permanent, I mean. They're as permanent as a mobile home, I, you know what I mean, on piers? Witness, is it the tax department that's gotta come up with something with these conics containers, or?
Uh, I would have to say you guys have to vote on how you wanna handle them right now, there's, they're just not taxed to period, they're just treated like a regular mobile structure.
See, and, and, I mean, like I said, just like with the.
And they're taxable to tax mobile homes, it's because they're.
Just with the battery storage alone, they're bolting them to piers, that's, that's a permanent structure, as, as, as permanent as, as can, as a motor home, I mean, a mobile home.
But if you don't bolt them to the piers, you use piers for stability, would that be different?
Well, we're just trying to figure out, I mean, there's a value to them, there's a taxable value to these things and.
Right, well, I.
I mean, it's so different than building a building, to be honest with you, so I mean, we just have to figure out where that's at.
Okay.
Many of them come in on just, they have like, the corners are on a plastic or concrete slab, basically, they're, it's not on a whole.
Right.
Structure system, it's just on gravel, on, on the corners.
I mean, if you're gonna spend the money of the rafters on this, I certainly would wanna bolt it to something.
Right.
You know, so we just have to, you know, figure out, there's gotta be a value to these things and to the county, cause. I mean, they're being used as a storage building, so they should be at a minimum tax, no different than a storage shed.
Well, they're being used as a building material now.
I was just gonna argue that it's really no different than two by fours or laminated poles now, cause it's supporting a roof, and I don't see how you wouldn't have a taxable value, it's literally gonna be a square footage structure.
Right.
And you're gonna well quipst them to bolt it.
That's what I mean, we have to figure that out.
Right, but I, I, I would say there's gotta be a way to evaluate, because now it's literally a building.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, you know, it's not a stand.
It's incorporated into a structure that it can.
Exactly, so I would, I would argue it would be somewhat taxed as just like, almost like a storage shed, pole building, outbuilding, whatever, however you classify it, I mean.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Are you gonna make living quarters out of that also, like a lot of people do?
No, no, not, that's just gonna be for the shop, and we're probably gonna have like a workshop on each side.
Yeah.
Like a little workshop in there.
Steel door that you would.
Right.
You'll probably spray foam that building and heat it, use it for the shop.
Yeah, probably with all the little propane wall heater things.
Yep, yep, yep.
Josh, you wanna bring up the resolution one more time? Cause at the bottom, like provision number four, there. You know, the, if the structure's determined to be in violation of this resolution or any other applicable section of zoning ordinance. Basically, there's a process to where we would serve it, there's a violation, and it would have to get brought up into compliance, so. I guess my opinion. If anything, if you would, you know, issue a variance, you wouldn't be violating the resolution, and if it's not in compliance, there is a process to go through it, and. If you issue a variance, then you still have the resolution in place where it's like, man, that wasn't a good idea, we're not doing that anymore. I mean, that would be one option, you know, when you do have a resolution, you have to follow it, the only other way to do it would be to maybe issue some kind of variance, because of more of the. The amount of, you know, you're violating it by limiting it to one conics per lot, so you'd have to, you'd have to like issue a variance, you couldn't just grant the permit, cause you'd be violating our resolution, but. I just would think that if there's a compliance scenario and there's a.